It's comp order, the meeting in Novi Library Board, and I'll ask you all to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
And Mr. Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Chair Currie.
Present.
Trustee Crawford.
Here.
Trustee Dooley.
Here.
Trustee Mitchner.
Present, thank you.
Trustee Wood is absent, excused. Trustee You.
Present.
Trustee Bartlett is here. Student Representative Celine.
Here.
And Student Representative Kara Carter.
Here.
Thank you. The approval of the agenda, are there any additions to the agenda? Yes, Trustee Mitchner?
Thank you, I just have one note, Chair, and that was on, instead of executive session, it should say closed session.
Um, where are you looking at?
Um, yep.
Oh.
On the agenda.
Okay.
Oh, I can explain if you'd like.
Just show me.
Page four.
Where are you talking?
I don't want to show you in your sheet, but I can explain why I said that.
Oh, okay.
Because executive is not in like a public meeting, like a library board or city council, executive is more for corporate, that's all. So we are closed. That's where I'm coming from. But it's in our agenda.
Okay, okay. So did you want it changed? Did you want it changed? I mean, the word changed?
Well, yes, because we really can't have an executive session. It needs to be closed. Does that make sense?
Yeah, okay.
No.
Pardon?
Are those terms identical?
Um, so, if you look in your trustee handbook, it talks a lot about that's a faux pas that's often made in meetings like this, and it's problematic. So we need to say close instead of executive. Executive is more for like corporations and things of that nature. Usually it's in work for profit. In meetings like ours, it's closed always. And Claire actually went into that at our ONA training as well.
So in terms of, but in terms like recording and note taking and minutes that are generated?
It should always say closed session. It's actually problematic if it says executive. Is that helpful?
Yeah, yeah, as long as they're identical in respect to those three areas.
Well, no, I mean, it's just, it is what it is. Like, it's in our handbooks. I didn't bring my handbook with me today, but I did look at it before I went over my notes.
Okay, very good. Are there any other corrections or additions? Yes?
Just a note for you on page three, it towards the bottom for manners for board action. It should say ages seventy-two to seventy-four, not seventy-three to seventy-four for the number two. Just, just for clarification.
Any others? Okay, will I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as corrected?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Second. Member Chair Currie, second. Mr. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Crawford.
Yes.
Trustee Dooley.
Yes.
Trustee Mitchner.
Yes.
Trustee You.
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett Boches, Trustee Chair Currie.
Yes.
Motion carries, carries six oh.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, are there any removals from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed. Member Bartlett?
Move to, to accept the consent agenda as printed.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, member You. All right, please call the roll.
Trustee Dooley.
Yes.
Trustee Mitchner.
Yes, thank you.
Trustee You.
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett Boches, Trustee Chair Currie.
Yes.
Trustee Crawford.
Yes.
Motion carries six oh.
Okay. All right, moving on then to our first public comment. In order to hear all citizens' comments at a reasonable hour, the library board requests that speakers respect the three-minute time limit. This is not a question-and-answer session, however, it's an opportunity to voice your thoughts with the library board. I will remind the audience, a remark should be limited to those pertaining to the board business, and inappropriate profane, vulgar, or abusive language and personal attacks will not be tolerated. Citizens must state their first, last name, and address. Anyone wish to come forward? Oh, okay.
Hi, Jason Mitchner, Novi resident. So I was very, very excited, cautiously optimistic that we will get Juneteenth passed as a paid holiday tonight. I did see that the HR board did recommend it for approval by the board, and since President Crawford sits on that committee, I'm hopeful that the motion will pass. I also did see that fine-free is up for discussion. I wanted to just make a point that fine and fees are distinct, and wanted to make a note that fees do serve a purpose in replacing lost and damaged materials so that the library doesn't incur an expense. A fine is just a punitive matter. I personally don't believe that the library should be involved in disciplining our residents. When it comes to matters of funding, though, it also is problematic if we're trying to fund libraries' ongoing operations on the back of penalties and punitive measures, because it raises the question, if we have more expenses, do we penalize our Novi residents more by raising the fines? It's a very slippery slope, it's not a really good way to fundraise. Millages are more appropriate. I know the city of Novi allows us to have up to a one mill. Right now, we're at point seven-eight, so if we even increase to the full amount, a household value of a hundred, five-hundred thousand dollars, that would only be an increase of a hundred and ten dollars a year. That's just an example. I think, though, that also is more proportional and it's more equitable, because usually the, usually those that are less advantaged and less privileged get more impacted by fines. So that would just assess people on their property value, you know, with some exception, you would draw, you know, you could draw a conclusion that based on property value, those owners would be able to afford it, they would pay more because the millage is scaled that way. So it would be a scalable increase in library funds based on people's ability to pay, as opposed to based on penalizing people. Again, those usually more unfortunate are the ones that get penalized. Also, I would like to point out that Director Farkas has done a lot of work in trying to increase the number of those users to the Novi Public Library, reaching out to middle schools, reaching out to elementary schools, a whole bunch of different fundraising, giving it to corporations. And I feel like doing fines actually moots some of the hard work that the director is doing to increase that, because if you have fines, you cannot renew your library card, and you would fall out of circulation. We heard from Louise, I believe, testified in October how she no longer uses the library and only goes to Northville because of that. And my last point, if we're looking for ways to increase, you know, revenue and minimize expenditures, I do see the city attorney is here again. He is a named partner, and I'm sure he's probably charging about four-hundred-and-fifty dollars an hour, so he'll charge us about six-hundred-and-seventy dollars just for attending this meeting. It's probably a bargain, given his stature and his position in his firm, but over the course of a year, that's going to cost the library roughly eight grand. So if you do need to cut expenses so that we can operate more efficiently, that would be a good place to start, since city attorneys usually didn't attend the library in the past. That's a good place where it should have very minimal impact, doesn't impact the citizens of Novi at all, and doesn't affect programs. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Sharon Trumpy, resident on Harvest Drive. Two-hundred-and-twelve days ago, this board unanimously approved a statement by President Crawford which reads in part, "The Novi Public Library is committing to ensuring that every Novi community member and library guest, board of trustee member, library staff, and volunteer is treated with dignity and respect. Discrimination, bigotry, and racism will not be tolerated." One-hundred-and-eighty-four days ago, the board received a formal staff complaint against trustee Chair Currie which stated, quote, "It is my belief that he is mismatched for this DEI committee and does it a disservice." One-hundred-and-fifty-six days ago, a community member made a public comment at a library board meeting sharing her concerns regarding trustee Chair Currie's public social media posts. One-hundred-and-twenty-one days ago, trustee Mitchner made a formal complaint against trustee Chair Currie alleging that he had mistreated her during a DEI committee meeting. One-hundred-and-seven days ago, a community petition was delivered to President Crawford demanding the removal of Shreeni Chair Currie as DEI chair. Over two-hundred-and-eighty community members have signed the petition. Ninety-three days ago, President Crawford announced that she was, quote, "pausing the board DEI committee indefinitely." She also stated that she believes she could find offensive content on the social media of, quote, "any other person on a committee or commission in this city." This is perhaps true of President Crawford, as her own social media includes, "Can we still order black coffee? Are brownies being taken off the shelf? Is White Castle changing its name? I'm sure Cracker Barrel is screwed." Fifty-eight days ago, trustee Chair Currie approached a young black woman after the library board meeting and told her that his social media posts remain up in public because, quote, "Nothing I said is offensive." To briefly review, these posts include referring to Vice President Kamala Harris as a skank, mocking a transgender actor by questioning how many closets there are, and contending that the police killing of Eric Gardner was the mob getting more than they had asked for. Two-hundred-and-twelve days ago, this board unanimously supported a statement that every board member and community member would be treated with dignity and respect, and that bigotry would not be tolerated. How many days will pass before you keep your word?
Good evening, Chair President Crawford and members of the library board and staff, Director Farkas, Mr. Schultz. Glad to see you here. Andrew Much, two-four-seven-four-zero, Taft Road. I came here this evening to speak in support of the idea of going fine-free at the Novi Public Library. While many of you know me from my years serving on city council, my day job is working most directly with the Waterford Township Public Library, a position, a library I've worked at for over twenty years, but my career in libraries actually is over twenty-five years. My very first library job in this world was working at the Novi Public Library many, many years ago. And in that position, I worked on the circulation desk, and so I had firsthand experience interacting with residents of our community, and I would say probably one of the least pleasant parts of that job was dealing with overdue fines. While we are an affluent community, and many of us have benefited from that, we are a very diverse community economically as well. And there were oftentimes patrons who, you know, their financial circumstances, their personal circumstances, those overdue fines were a hindrance to their use of the library. And it was not a pleasant situation watching parents scrape pennies out of their purse, or they're pulling out a few dollars out of their wallet, knowing that they probably needed that money a lot more than the library did. At the Waterford Library, we have actually been fine-free for two years, since 2019. It started as a pilot project, and then due to the COVID pandemic, that got extended. Waterford has an advisory library board, so the official policymaking body of the library is the township board. And at a recent township board meeting, the township board approved, finalizing the elimination of overdue fines in the same kind of manner as proposed for Novi. In our experience and in our conversations, it's had fairly negligible impact on our library revenues, but more importantly, it's had a huge positive impact in our community. We've had nothing but positive feedback from our residents, and I will tell you that the frontline staff, it's been many years since I've worked that circulation desk, but the folks who work it today have had a very positive response to that. So I encourage you to adopt a fine-free policy for the benefit of our community. Thank you.
Hello. Brenda Anderson, three-zero-six-eight-zero, Vine Court, Novi. In looking at fines, we could also look at the business model of Blockbuster Video, vines don't help your business.
Thank you. All right, moving on with the student reports, and I don't know who's going to go first. Rita?
Yeah, I'm going to go first, thank you. So for the tween and teen library programs, the tail-wogging reading buddies program was held on November tenth. It was an opportunity to provide a comfortable and non-judgmental space for children and their families to read to a therapy dog to encourage the child's reading skills and the love of reading. The Between the Pages, tween book club trivia program was held on November seventeenth. Guests read The Sign of the Beaver by Elizabeth George Spear and answered trivia questions relating to the book. The attendance for that event was one person. The Grab and Go Harvest Crafts Kit was held on November twentieth. Guests were able to register to get a grab-and-go kit to make harvest crafts. The attendance for that event was twenty-five people. For the teen space update during November twenty-twenty-one, there were one-hundred-and-one guests who visited teen space, great turnout. There was no teen space in November first, November second, November twenty-fourth, November twenty-fifth, November twenty-sixth, November twenty-ninth, and November thirtieth. Now Abai is going to talk about the rest of this agenda.
Moving on to teen advisory board, the third TAB meeting was held on the, for the twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two school year was held on November nineteenth. This meeting started with a welcome from the TAB president, Farheen, and Ms. Gojak, the Information Service Library. Following the welcome, teens participated in an icebreaker to help get to know each other. Then they discussed what they were thankful for and brainstormed ideas on how to give back to the community during the holidays. There were seven people in attendance. Now moving on to upcoming programs, for the Health of it teen edition will For the Health of it Teen Edition will focus on time management and how to make everything fit in one day on January eleventh. The next Between the Page meetings, which is a teen book club trivia, will be held on January nineteenth, and the title for this month is Contest by Gordon Carmen. The next teen advisory board meeting will be on January twenty-first, and the next Tail Wagging Reading Buddies meeting will be on January twenty-sixth. This month's, November's Teen Stop featured display, displayed on Young Adult Fiction Celebrating Native American Heritage Month. Books by and about indigenous people were celebrated. Nano-Rimo books that were written in one month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our students? No? Okay, trustee Mishner?
Thank you so much. Um, I was just going to say, great job. You, you all just joined not too long ago, but you are doing a lot of good work, and I love the Nano-Rimo stuff, too. I follow that on Twitter and I've done that before. It's a fun contest. So, good job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to the president's report. It's going to be very short. One thing I would like to say is I'd like to congratulate the director and staff for winning the award. Oh, you have it, you have it with you. This is the, um, the award from the Novi Chamber, and it was for the Builders Award. Maybe Director Farkas, you could tell us a little something about that?
It, it was specifically for Community Builder for the Novi Public Library. It was awarded yesterday, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. When I filled out the information, I talked specifically about our Lake Shore Lending Library and connecting with our North End and trying to make new community relations. So, thank you. Great staff that worked on that as well as everybody in the building.
Congratulations.
Okay, under the president's report, you can see that, um, I don't need to read this about contact being made with Dr. Meadows, but I'll ask Director Farkas if there's anything additional that you know, since you've probably spoken with him?
I did have a meeting with him this morning, so I'm sending back information just to, he's hoping to reach out to all of you as board members to schedule an opportunity to meet with him in person or virtually, to, based on the information that was provided back in the summer in terms of his scope for one-on-ones. Working on how to build trust with the board, also board governance and having the ability for all of you to work together. So those are, based on the, the information, the scope that he provided back in, I want to say July now, because that's when the last time the information was there. But, um, so he'll be reaching out, be looking for an email from me tomorrow with more details, and then we'll go from there. The plan is for him to be back in February and provide some information specifically to all of you as board members in, at the February meeting. So, thank you.
Trustee Mishner?
Thank you. So I wanted to ask, I know when he came in the summer, he was here talking a lot about goal setting. That was the purpose. It was the goal session. But now I hear that he's here to build trust and also diversity, I think was one of the main topics as well. When I brought up diversity at that meeting, he was like, that's not what I'm here for, basically. So I'm just wondering if we can get a better understanding of the scope of what the goal is, like an agenda of his actual focus? Because it's not clear. Thank you.
Okay, that's the end of my report, and we'll move on to the treasures report. Member Jeff is not with us tonight, or Member Wood. So I guess we'll direct any questions to Director Farkas. Does anybody have any questions about the finance report? Our treasures report? Okay, trustee Mishner?
So, um, just to have context, in our policy meeting, I already shared with Director Farkas and trustee Wood that I would do some deep digging, just because one of the things that was brought up in that meeting was there was a concern about fine-free potentially impacting employees, like jobs. And I thought that was problematic. I do think that we shouldn't base employee budget on fines, but I also wanted to see if there's anywhere else where I could find, and of course, I shared that with you already, Julie, but I'll go ahead and read what I did discover. There was a lot here, so. So, and I just wrote it out for myself, so that way I didn't have to do more. So I did a deep dive from my own personal knowledge, since the common obstacle to a lot of the programs and benefits we want to provide to the community seems to be our finances. That's what we hear often. So after looking at the treasures report this week, I have a few questions and points that I'd like to clarify on the revenue in the spinners' report for the city of Novi. So if you will turn to page twenty-five in the packet, that's a good place to start.
Okay.
For our revenue. Number one, under property and tax revenue are a major source of funding. The line item is two sixty-eight, zero, 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 and it's through four oh three, zero, zero. Property tax revenue, it looks like we collected eighty thousand, three hundred and two dollars and fifty cents more in revenue here than planned. And first, I wanted to ask, is this correct?
Based on the finances we've received so far from the city.
Thank you so much. Okay. It's good to know what I'm talking about, right? If so, I wanted to know if you can explain the unexpected difference and also if you can verify this, which you just did. It seems like that would directly positively impact our bottom line for the current budget year. Like, this seems like a big perk that we should be celebrating, but I wanted to make sure I understood, and thank you for verifying that. And then two, lines two sixty-eight, zero, zero, zero through four oh three, zero, zero, three through zero, zero, eight, property tax revenue, Brownfield cap two thousand zero eight, uh, property tax revenue, Brownfield cap two thousand fifteen, and property tax revenue, CIA cap two thousand eighteen. I wanted to know, what are these revenue streams and why are they always negative year after year? I'm curious if they're taxes that we pay to the city that, now, maybe I just can't understand. Also, it looks like all three of these lines came in under what we planned for in our budget, so do we now have a savings of thirteen thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents?
I'll have to get back with you on that. I'll be happy to re, to respond to the full board. I'll ask if this has all been collected or not, because that's some of the questions is whether all the money has come in at this point. I do believe there's chargebacks throughout the year, so I'll find that out for you.
Super helpful, Julie. Thank you. And then three, line two sixty-eight, zero, zero, zero through four eighteen, zero, zero, PPT reimbursement. It looks like unexpected revenue here is of two thousand, fifty-five dollars and ninety-three cents, and I was wondering if you could also explain where this came from and if it's something that would be reoccurring, if that's something we're going to continue to see?
Be happy to respond back.
Okay, all right, so I'm just making notes of the stuff you're getting back with me on. Okay, so under federal grants, I noticed that we had none budgeted for the year, and I was curious if there are no grants that the library staff is pursuing this year. Typically, we do pursue grants, so I just was wondering.
We do. They're typically with, there's nothing federal at this point that I know that we actually qualify for. There were some technology ones, but we didn't. And then there's always performance grants, things like that, that we always try for. Those don't fall under the federal, though, but we do when there's opportunities for it. I, at this time, am not aware of anything that the current staff is working on.
Super helpful. Thank you. Okay. And then under other revenue, two sixty-eight thousand through six thirty-three, point one hundred insurance reimbursement, I noticed the insurance did reimburse us for eighty-nine thousand, two hundred thirty dollars and sixty-nine cents for the losses incurred in the summer's electrical storms, which is great. So I was glad to see this point was finally resolved. That was a big one that we were concerned about, so it looks like we were reimbursed on that.
But there is a payout of over a hundred thousand, because there's also a deductible as well. So just so you're aware.
Okay.
So we're not, we're not actually going to be, Jeremy, we, we actually paid out more, and we got eighty-nine back.
Okay, so we get, so we did get reimbursed a large number.
We did, yes, to go towards it, but, but.
But not the full thing, is what you're saying. But that's still a big win, because you were thinking.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, I was celebrating those things, right? And also, so I can just understand what our money is. Um, and then two sixty-eight, zero, zero, zero through six sixty-five, point two ninety, the library fundraising revenue, I see that we have raised five hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty-eight cents more than we thought we would. We're only halfway through the budget year, so I wanted to note that. And these are just, like, opportunities here. Under fines and forfeitures, two sixty-eight, zero, zero, zero through six fifty-seven, zero, 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 library book fines. I was wondering, does this line item reflect both the fines for overdue materials and fees for damaged, destroyed, lost materials or just fees?
So you're on the, um, the currently for the, which?
So that's line item two sixty-eight.
We have not been charging. We have not, we have been fine-free, so that is just fees. We have not had any fines at this date.
Sure, but typically in that line item, I'm curious, and let me, I, I think I'll make sense in a minute. So during the January ninth, uh, twenty twenty budget session last year, it was determined that twenty twenty-one budget account, two sixty-eight, six through six fifty-seven library book fines only includes revenue from lost books and not revenue from fines. So that was said last year. Actually, I, I brought the minutes. So if you see the Novi Library Board Minutes Budget Study Session, January ninth, twenty twenty, page, it's actually pages four through five, it is both fines and fees. I was wondering, what is the breakdown between the two categories? Because there, that's where it's, you know, this, this topic comes up. And then lastly, I was wondering, does this line item reflect actual money collected or just the amount owed? I remember when we talked about that, that was one of the topics that came up. I'll stick to my script here, but just off the top of my head, I remember that was one of the topics that we came up with, is that everything's not always collected. So you can have this, this revenue that, that's needed, but it's not always collected, and we don't have a, obviously, we don't have a collection agency. Two sixty-eight, zero, zero, zero through six fifty-eight, state penal fines, I noticed we have collected two thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars and ninety-seven cents more than we planned for twenty-one, twenty-two, and we're only halfway through the budget year. So this is, this is a lot of good stuff, I think. Under interest income.
Can I, can I interrupt for one moment?
Yeah, please.
Okay. For that particular line item, the state penal fines, that's all that will be received. We've already received the.
So that's not reoccurring? Okay. Still good, though, money. Money's helpful. But thank you for clarifying. That's super helpful. Okay, then two sixty-eight, zero, zero, zero through six sixty-four, point five hundred, unrealized gain on investments. This item is currently a loss, actually, at two thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents, and was a loss at seven thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents for the twenty twenty-one budget. And I was wondering if we can get a better understanding of this account, to understand if anything can be done to minimize or turn the losses around? Is that something you'll get back with me on?
Yep.
Okay, so just make a note. And then for expenses under supplies, two sixty-eight, zero, zero, zero through seven thirty-four dash, excuse me, not dash, dot, five hundred, computer supply and equipment, we were seventy-six thousand, seven hundred sixty-one dollars and forty-two cents over budget due to the unplanned expense of replacing that large amount of equipment after damage incurred in the summer's electrical storms. But after the insurance payment, we now technically, based on what I saw, I know you said something different just now, but what I saw, it looks like we should have three, three thousand, five hundred forty-one dollars and eight cents left in that budget, but you're going to give us some different numbers on that, it sounds like.
What is the exact number that you're, the budget number?
Yeah, so it looks like we were seventy-six thousand, seven hundred sixty-one dollars and forty-two cents over the budget due to the unplanned expense. And then based on what we got back, we should, the numbers I had, we should have three thousand, five hundred forty-one dollars and eight cents left in the budget. So maybe you can clear that up. Also, I can make a note. We'll get more understanding of that. And then to the balance sheet for the city of Novi, and that, that's on page twenty-nine in your packet, that one is line two sixty-eight, zero, zero, zero dot through zero, zero, three, cash, and it's pooled cash, actually, Fifth Third and Commerce Banks, Comerica, I'm sorry. The account is negative, and it's negative one hundred eighty-nine thousand, sixty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. And I was wondering on that one, if we can get some details on this account to better understand this?
Sure.
So there's just a lot of things that I noticed just digging, and I promised you I would, just so everybody knows for transparency, we talked about this already, so there shouldn't be a surprise. But I promised I would do a deep dive because I thought, if I can, if I can look and see where we can squeeze extra money, I would rather look there instead of any kind of employee losing any opportunity, as was mentioned at the policy meeting, for fines. I don't think they should lose their jobs because of fine-free. But it looks like we have a lot of money that we may not be aware of. And I don't usually dig in this deep either, so that was good for me to hold myself accountable as a trustee.
Thank you.
So that's all I have for the treasures report.
Are there any other questions regarding the treasures report? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the second audience, uh, public comment. I'm sorry. Once again.
I promise I'll talk fast.
Once again.
It's not a problem.
Oh, my gosh.
I just want to recognize, um, page thirty-one, Kelly Kolchak.
I was so taken with all the numbers.
From our Information Services Department. Kelly is, was at one time a librarian and, and stayed on as a Sunday librarian, and she's celebrating twenty years, so congratulations to Kelly. Also, we did have a DEI staff meeting. Gail Anderson was, I'm trying to give all the staff an opportunity to host and then create the minutes, so this is a snapshot of what was, what was discussed and talked about and currently being planned as of November thirtieth. Any questions specifically to that? Then moving on, it's some of our COVID reports, information from our patron point, which is now has morphed into the e-newsletter, which goes out to over twenty thousand of our cardholders. We're very happy to be using that. And let me just double check. I know I have reports in there from each of our department heads, and I'm happy to entertain any questions if you have any.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I, I face a woman that's DEI worker. Is that addressing to us for those who haven't done so, please, or be prepared or reason?
That's for our staff. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Mishner?
I just had a fun one, I hope. With the Community Builder Award, I was wondering, are we going to put that somewhere visible where people can see? Because that's really cool.
Yes. Usually, usually it goes in the display case downstairs, so I know that iQube is being promoted right now, but I will make sure that it, it does get put on display.
Thank you. And then I just have one more on the annual report. If that's okay.
The annual report?
Yeah, one more question for Julie.
Okay.
Yeah, director's report is one more question. That's not Community Builder Award. But, um, so we got our annual report last week from you all, passed out. I noticed that, and I saw the blurb in the packet, which was helpful. I do know that typically what we do with the annual report is we have a presentation by a staff member that's super informative, and they kind of go onto detail. I noticed that didn't happen this year, and it usually happens earlier than it did last, last month. I also noticed, so in the past, we've had like two, like one pack, one annual, um, annual, I don't want to call it annual review. The annual report usually is thicker, and this one was just one, and it was skinnier with less detail. So I was just wondering, a couple of questions. I was wondering, is someone going to do a presentation? Because I think that's super helpful for transparency for us, but also for the community as well, since they didn't get a packet handed to them when we got ours last week. I know they're in the library, which is good, but they're, like, low. So it's easy to miss them. So I was just wondering if we're going to have somebody present on our annual report as well?
I can have Dana, absolutely, because she's the one who works on it. I'd like to give her the credit. We did run everything through the marketing committee in order for them to give details and information on it, and then we also presented it to council. So it's already been presented to council.
Right, but I wanted, like.
Sure.
It's cool for the city council, obviously, but we're the library, so I wanted to see if we could have a presentation, too.
Happy to.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Jess?
Just, just a comment. I want to give a huge shout out to the iQube team, Dominic and Shannon in particular, who helped with a very large sublimation project. If you look here, packet on page forty-four, I created drawstring bags for my students that entered our annual, oh, the annual, entered our annual art contest sponsored by our PTA. We ended up with a record turnout, so I have a budget of five hundred dollars. So we looked at some options through the Amazon, fifteen dollars a bag, took us way over our budget with fifty-six kids getting awarded. So this project, doing it through the iQube, we were able to create the bag at, uh, just about a dollar a bag. So that was a major savings, and I was proud to have that little iQube shout out on the bag as well. And we look forward to giving those to our students after the winter break.
Okay. Anything else? All right, once again, sorry for missing the director's report.
No worries.
I wasn't missing it. I was saving it for a special moment, so.
Do not worry.
That's what I was doing.
I do not take it personally.
Yeah, okay. Okay, and now time for our second audience participation. So in order to hear all citizens' comments at a reasonable hour, the library board requests that speakers respect the three-minute time limit. This is not a question-and-answer session, however, it's an opportunity to voice your thoughts with the library board. I'll remind the audience, a remark should be limited to those pertaining to the board business, and inappropriate profane vulgar or abusive language and personal attacks will not be tolerated. Citizens must state their first, last name, and address. Anyone wishing to speak?
Hi, Jason Mishner, Novi resident. So I wanted to address, before we go into committee reports, the pausing of the DEI committee. I was giving a lot of thought to this, and I thought, you know, logically, trying to kind of do a decision tree, there's two big points of why you would not meet as a committee, because you don't have any work to do, or for some other reason. So I think there are other committees that don't meet regularly, probably because they don't have work, but it seems like there is DEI work that needs to be accomplished by the board, based on the constant public comments, the discussions at the board meetings, and the fact that, you know, the staff of the library is busy doing DEI work, and I'm sure they would appreciate board support and oversight, you know, being able to help with funding and all that stuff. So I find it, it doesn't seem like it's a lack of work or a lack of need. So that means it's paused for another reason. And I would imagine if everybody on the committee is passionate about their work, they would figure out how to meet and start doing that work. So it's now been paused for four months. It sounds like, based on previous board meetings, that it won't start again until after this mentoring session in January, which means it probably won't be starting until February, means it'll be on ice for over six months, half a year. That seems like a very long time to work out any issues, especially if it's some kind of, you know, trying to figure out how to work together issue. I would think that if people are passionate on the committee, they would find a way to work together if they need to cool off maybe a month tops. But there's got to be a way to work together, and I don't see how bringing in an expert is going to magically heal everything. So I'm very suspicious at this whole approach to the DEI committee and how it's been handled. I will ask the question I asked at the listening session in June, that we didn't have a reflection session, so I never got an answer to. I would really like to hear all the board members' opinion on DEI, what they think it stands for, and what they believe it's for, and if they support it or not. That is a question that I had that didn't get answered by the board members. I would especially be interested in that response from the chair, since I would imagine if the, if the chair was passionate about DEI work, he would have found a way to bring his committee together so they could accomplish that work. I'd also be very interested in hearing what the president thinks about DEI and her opinions and feelings on it, because as the chairperson of the board in general, I would think a solution that would bring the DEI team together so that they could do the work would be better than simply just putting off the issue towards some other indefinite solution provided by some outside resource that may or may not happen in January and may or may not allow the DEI committee to restart. So I would love to hear that at some point, maybe a board comments at the end of the meeting would be great. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Sharon Trumpy, Harvest Drive. Novi Public Library is a Class VI library with a population served of fifty-five thousand. Are there other Class VI libraries with comparable populations that are fine-free? Yes. They include LaPierre District, Grace A. Dow Memorial in 2019, Waterford Township as of 2021, Dearborn Heights, July 2021, Taylor Community, Farmington Community, August 2020. When asked about the decision to go fine-free in 2019, Grace A. Dow Memorial Library responded, "Our mission at the library is not to teach responsibility within the community, it is to provide accessibility." Dearborn Heights Library responded, "It is the mission of our library to provide equal access to information, services, and opportunities that empower, enrich, and enhance the quality of life for all. Fines are a barrier to that access. Eliminating that barrier opens doors to all in our community to utilize the resources the library offers." Also Class VI and fine-free, but with larger populations are Monroe County, 2019, Kent District, Kalamazoo Public, January 2020, Grand Rapids Public, June 2020, Capital Area District, June 2021, Traverse Area District, July 2021, Detroit Public, 2019. The director of Kent District Library explained that they decided to go fine-free because, quote, "Each year, hundreds of patrons stop using library services entirely because they are deterred by late fees." Kalamazoo Public Library said, "Fines do not encourage the on-time return of materials. What fines do is prevent access for patrons who cannot afford to pay their fines. At any given time, ten percent of our patrons have their accounts blocked due to overdue fines. We want to remove as many barriers to access as possible, and fines represent a significant barrier to residents of lower east socioeconomic status." Capital Area District's library said they eliminated fines because, quote, "Our mission is to empower our diverse communities to learn, imagine, and connect. Since overdue fines create a financial barrier for many in our community, eliminating them will allow more open access to more people. We hope this will encourage former users to revisit the library along with attracting new users." Are there libraries in Oakland County that are fine-free? Yes. In addition to Waterford and Farmington Community Libraries, which I already mentioned, libraries that have gone fine-free in Oakland County include Franklin Public Library, Milford Public Library, 2019, Lion Township in June 2019. Lion Township said that they went fine-free because, quote, "When we took a really hard look at the impact of overdue fees, we found that they presented a serious barrier to library use." In fact, libraries all over Michigan have gone fine-free. Small libraries, big libraries, libraries in urban, suburban, and rural areas, libraries serving all classes of patrons. On the list of fine-free Michigan libraries are Southgate, 2019, Brandon Township, March 2020, Garden City Public, 2019, Redford Township, 2019, Mount Clemens, Cromeine in Heartland, Romeo District, Memphis Public, Carroll Area, Stair Public, Brant District, and Coldwater, Eaton Rapids, Dewitt District.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Moving on to committee reports. Oh, sorry.
Betsy Bohine, Land Brook. Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to continue Sharon's comment, and if I have time at the end, I have a couple more things I'll throw on for myself as well. Okay, Saginaw, Chippewa Tribal, Mount Pleasant, Alcona County, Presseale Detroit, Sheboygan, Northfield Township, Mackinac Area, Harbor Springs, Petoskey, Charlevoix, Boyne District, Leland Township, Manistee County, Lewitt District in Grand Haven, Henneka District, Elgin, J.C. Wheeler in St. Martin, and then Constick Township, Paw Paw District, Cass District, February of 2020, Buchanan District, St. Ignis, Community District in Corona, Michigan, Waterville, sorry, I'm terrible at some of these names. Okay, thank you all. Mason County, Bridgeport, Opperman Memorial in Kingston, Baldwin Free in Birmingham, Flat Rock Superior District, Bath Township. Buchanan District Library said, "Libraries are about providing access and eliminating late fees as a way to ensure that equitable access for everyone in our community. Going fine-free is a growing trend in American libraries resulting in increased visits and circulation. That is exactly what we want. All benefit from a curious, engaged, and well-informed community." Mason County District Library decided to eliminate fines because there is a shame element to late fees, which is super counterproductive and prevents people from accessing library services. This change will encourage a more positive library experience for everyone. Many other libraries are in the process of going fine-free and are partially fine-free, including Muskegon, Howard Miller in Zeeland, Herrick District in Holland, Sagatuck, Fenville District, Willard in Battle Creek, Hamburg Township, Dorothy Hall in Diamond Dale, TA Cutler in St. Louis, Michigan, Central Michigan University, Richfield Township, Spring Lake District, and Tamarack Public in Lakeview. Okay, so I have just a small amount of time here. I would like to share my experience on this issue as well. With my kids being virtual last year, there are three of them, the oldest is twelve, we have started using the library so much more because of the fine-free situation. And I would like to very clearly say, it is not because I cannot afford to pay my late fees, it is because it does add just even a frustration to it. Before, I was always trying to like check and track and get on the app at least every few days to make sure I didn't have anything late, because even if I had forgotten to renew something, then the fines would start accumulating, and it would get to a point where I'm like, okay, well, great, now I have like fifteen dollars of fees, I may as well have just gone and bought that book. My kids are reading more than they did before. Our reading levels have increased, which I know at least in the school, that's a pretty big deal. And I think that has a lot to do with the increased access, because it is less of a pain in my butt to try to remember to get everything back here at the exact right minute. Thank you, everybody.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Moving on to committee reports, I'll ask the chairman if you have anything to report in addition to what's been written. I know that Chairman Wood isn't here, and I don't know if there's anything additional that needs to be reported. Okay. The HR committee, I'll go on to the.
Well, I was at the policy meeting, so if, since he's not here, I would love to share a little bit.
Okay. And what is, is it something in addition to what's written here?
Well, there's not a lot written. So, yeah, I wanted to give a little narrative. Are you okay with that?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So we did have a robust discussion, and Brian Bartlett was there as well. And that's where I talked about, like, digging into the treasure report, because it was mentioned by Director Farkas that she was concerned if fines happened, then it might impact employees', jobs, actually. So that's, that's something that we talked about at length. So that kind of gives you an understanding of why I dug into the treasures report as much as I did. But we had a robust discussion also about making sure that we understand the research on fines. Mary Storch was a librarian for many years in our library, a great resource, and all of us have received a letter from her, all of the trusties have received a letter from her and Director Farkas as well, where she talked passionately about fine-free and how important it was. So we did talk about that as well at length. So I just wanted to bring that into the conversation as well. We've been talking about this topic since, I think, Director Farkas got back from PLA like 2018, from when it was in Philly, and brought that to us as an opportunity. And I think here we are in 2021, and it hasn't happened just yet. So we did talk about that in the meeting as well. So I just wanted to throw those bits in.
Okay.
Thank you.
The HR committee? Yes.
Also, in that meeting, we were also discussing, for some clarification, on the employee side, we were also discussing shortfalls in this, in this year expenditures, you know, eclipsing dollars by a significant amount. We also discussed the challenges over the next year in how to come up with a budget. We are, as I think everybody in this room is aware, we are facing inflation that we haven't seen in thirty years. Our challenge as a library board in keeping this library viable, which is our number one goal, is that we have to determine where we're going, what things are going to look like in July of 2023. And if you are paying any attention, this week, the federal government couldn't even keep track of that. They're telling us that all of a sudden, we could be looking from six percent to nine percent inflation. So, I mean, we are, we are talking about a few things like that in our budgeting process that makes this very challenging beyond just saying, you know, we would like to be fine-free or not. So we really have to be aware of that. The other thing that I, you know, that we talked about also in there, when we talk about employees, we do talk about accessibility. And that is, I have not, one, we are open seven days a week. Most libraries in this state are not open seven days a week. Detroit is back, closes the majority of their libraries two days a week. If you come along and say, hey, this is the day I want to close, I want to go fine-free, that's in the budget, no problem. But that's part of, part of the challenges we're facing as far as dollars go. And that really hasn't, you know, that is something also we addressed in that meeting as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, the, I'll make a little explanation here about the HR committee. We, we met and we reviewed all the findings related to making Juneteenth an additional paid holiday, along with the closure. Discussion is located on page sixty-four in the packet, and I hope you had a chance to read that. The data collected included letters and public comment, support, and President Biden's declaration of Juneteenth being a federal holiday, results of the Novi Public Library Employee Survey indicating support even among those people who would not benefit, the number of paid holidays enjoyed by local libraries of similar size, and the city of Novi employees' paid holidays numbering thirteen as compared to the library's current ten paid holidays. So based on this information, the HR committee recommended to the board is, the recommendation to the board is to add Juneteenth as a paid holiday as well as a closure. Any other committees, chairs wishing to speak about their particular committee? Okay.
I just wanted to say really quick, on the DEI, I just wanted to also comment, hopefully we will be able to start meeting again. The work is.
I appreciate that, but I'm just asking for the chairman to speak about the different committees, so the DEI has not met, and neither have other committees met, so there's nothing new to report.
But we still get to talk about it, right? Like, we still get to, as a trustee, I still get to bring forth a.
Sure, you can talk about it, yes. You can talk about it, but this, I mean, what is it you wish to say about the DEI, other than you would like for them to start meeting, and I appreciate that.
Just make sure we're being respectful. I did want to wait for all the chairs, but I'm not a chair, but I do have passion about the DEI, and I know it's been mentioned quite a bit. I always plan on mentioning this, so you can prepare for that. So every time we go to committee reports, I do plan on saying, I hope that we are able to reconvene. I think that's so important, Kathy, especially in our world today. So that's where I was coming from. I also just wanted to state that a lot of libraries are doing great work when it comes to DEI. We get regular webinars from Library of Michigan, we get regular information from Library Journal. We are falling behind as a pause committee. So I continue to look at those reports as much as I get them in, and I do want to bring that information to our board. I know I'm not the chair, but hopefully my voice is heard as much as possible. This is important. So I did want to bring that in and also have that in the record. And I will always mention it to be prepared.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, let's see.
Finance Committee, we did have a meeting, I think as most of, most of the boards are aware, we do have to come up with a budget early. Next year, that budget is from July, July 2022 through June of 2023. Our first estimate is we're about two hundred thousand dollars short. We did ask Julie to put together a plan based only on tax revenue, just to see where, you know, we're at and what some of our differences are.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
For events, marketing, and fundraising, if you turn to page sixty-five, that's where kind of our summary is. I try to provide an agenda before we meet, and then I try to take notes while we're meeting, so that you have that for your packet. So if you have any questions for me specifically, I'll definitely entertain that. One thing I wanted to point out real quick, though, because we are talking about revenue streams, is that our committee specifically, each time we meet, and I've professed this often in the meeting, is I really want to try to innovate and come up with different revenue streams, because a lot of the old revenue streams that libraries used to depend on, some of them still do, those are not necessarily revenue that's built with integrity in mind. When you base your revenue on penalizing, it's an entirely different ballgame with regards to not only access, but sentiment with regards to the institution that you represent. And so I felt as chair for events, marketing, and fundraising, that part of our duty is to think outside the box to help with that. And so every month, you're going to see in the report a couple of new ideas. One, that I'm working on right now, for friends, because that's our five oh one C three arm currently, is to do a Scholastic book fair, but for adults. This is actually not my idea, it's an idea that's from a librarian out in the California area. So this is actually gaining traction. It's something that a lot of people are talking about. I will say that I did get shot down my first try with Scholastic. That will be in my minutes in the next meeting, but I will try again, and I'm going to think about how else to get around it. We also have a fundraiser that's going to be next spring during Library Week, talking about access to, you know, what we provide, and lending library is a huge catalyst for that. But we also have read boxes in the community, and I kind of thought, well, wouldn't it be cool if we could figure out a way to auction off or provide a way for people to get read boxes to put where they think they'd want to put them? So that's something that's going to be coming out in 2022 that the staff in our committee is kind of talking about and working on. That is one of our goals. So, you know, I just wanted to put in record that our committee as trustees, Trustee Bartlett and Trustee you, working with staff, Julie and Dana specifically, we really are trying to come up with different ways. And I think, I'm very confident and optimistic that we're going to make some really cool things happen, and that's all I want to say. So if you have questions, let me know.
Okay, anyone else? All right, moving along to matters for board action. Board members, no, I mean, I'm sure that you remember that I did ask for recommendations relating to Juneteenth as a paid holiday, and the board, board members already have heard the recommendation from the Finance Committee. However, just sort of as a reminder, remind you that they proposed an optional PTO Day converted to an eleventh paid, eleventh paid, and Veterans Day would become a floating holiday, I'm just sort of summarizing it, and could be used anytime throughout the calendar year. Employees could also request to use Juneteenth as a floating holiday. There was no recommendation from the Policy Committee, and the HR Committee recommends that Juneteenth become an eleventh paid holiday, along with a closure for Novi Library and in. along with a closure for Novi Library and employees. So I will make a motion to include Juneteenth as a paid holiday along with the closure, uh, of the Novi Library. And is there, I will make that motion. Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay, discussion. Yes, Number Curry, Chair Curry.
Yes, so, um, I'm not sure where to start, but, um, so this has been an issue that I realize this is a topic that one, people feel very passionate about. It's obviously about the umpteen times come back before this organization. Um, but that passion has gotten to the level where there's not even room for disagreement without vilification, nor the possibility that offers a compromise will even be taken seriously. And I think that reflects poorly on the state of discussion in this community. Um, so radical is the dogma being put forth that Trustee Michener has stated that consideration of the Juneteenth holiday, that is anything less than the equal of Independence Day is a sign of disrespect. I will leave it to determine what that means. We are all saying, oh, we don't close on Veterans Day, Good Friday, President's Day, or even MLK Day. So once again, the Novi Library Board is being asked to consider something, again, repeatedly, and we are graced with the usual smattering from the Novi Virtue Signal Choir. Thank you for lending. Um, so I believe it's a poor premise to say that the library can afford it, so why not? And I believe part of the argument is being based on bad math. With the city's finance department's advice, uh, they provided a calculation framework that, uh, maybe the cost of a holiday was $2,000. I put forward that that's patently absurd. Simple logic would say that if that were the case, we could give everyone 50 paid holidays a year and barely make a dent in our $2 million personnel budget. Evaluating the cost of a library holiday means we must first, one, take into account the cost of closure. That's the lost utility that the library provides to citizens. Based on the fact that we spend about $3.2 million for a library, which is open 345 days a year, this is roughly about $9,500 per day. Since people pay for something only to derive more utility, let's round it up and call it 10 grand. Then there's the lost productivity. Now, while it's clear that what economists call unit product of things like Sheldon still has to go on, it's easy to forget that our non-unite workers, that's our management, that's our program creators, et cetera, like our managers, developers, they're spending fewer hours doing the work the citizens have passed them to do. So we either get less productivity out of the library in a year, or a reduced level, or we have to pay additional for that. Finally, we should consider the cost of payment over the simple closure library. In this case, the finance department has calculated the policy effect incorrectly. We have three categories of employees. Those who are salaried on annual basis, their pay will not change. We have another group that is hourly and does not qualify for benefits. They will receive no benefit from the additional closure. In fact, they will like, they will see by the policy a reduction in income. Now, the chair has announced that she takes measures to avoid that, but nonetheless, we have to talk about the policy, not the chair's management discretion. Um, so there's a middle ground where we're, which will benefit. I would also put forth to you that if you look at it, and this will offend some people, that's the least diverse part of our library staff. So furthermore, there was an employee survey that was taken, uh, but we're not bringing, conveying data here at the library. So the survey that was given presented five choices, only two of which came from the board. So it's not surprising that given the plurality of choices, some of which were pulled from the ether, that there was no, that no clear majority was evident from the data presented. But here's what's in the data, here's what the data does say and doesn't say. In a library of about 70 employees, only 17 selected the option under which Juneteenth became a paid holiday. This is identical to the number, which I'd prefer to keep the current system or a system in which more of the holidays were, are floating. Another 11 voted to match the city's holiday plan schedule, which offers 13 holidays, three more than current, though not Juneteenth. Since that hasn't been put out there, we can only assume that those who didn't opt for this plan of free additional holidays at least had the foresight not to ask for something that exerts cost beyond anything we've debated. Another 13 employees chose not to respond to the survey. This is actually the second largest category responded, and my guess is it was a conscious choice. So the hard facts are, and this is for the record, there is not a groundswell of support for this Juneteenth proposal amongst the library staff. But it does appear clear that our employees would like more flexibility in their holidays and more of them if possible, we all would. So within this, we have failed to address an issue that, the following issue. We have an increasingly diverse population here in the city of Novi, and a holiday policy which meets and addresses their needs should command our attention. So in our discussions with the finance, uh, committee, we recognized this, and we attempted to evolve our policies to reflect the growing diversity in our community. And with that, we came up with a, the creation of additional floating holidays. And it's important, floating holidays are key, because you know what? And we'll discuss some situations that do arise. A person, an Orthodox Christian, who celebrates their Christmas at the beginning of January, when they haven't yet accumulated a bank, should not be seen as shirking worker going on vacation again already. A Jewish person selling bread in Korea, probably, and he takes a PTO, there's somebody potentially not recognizing that's a holiday. And suddenly, oh, they made up another, another day off. Um, so part of diversity is recognizing that different people have different value systems, and that different people value things differently. And that's okay. That's what makes us an amazing country. But some of the things that we have to reflect that are going to be growing in terms of population, in terms of representation, in terms of interest in our community, whether or not they're vocal. Take the Christian community. We already talked about Orthodox Christmas at the beginning of January, when the New Year nobody's accumulated a time off yet, have been credited as a PTO or a floating holiday. The finance department's proposal would have rectified that. Ash Wednesday, Good Friday, those are important holidays for many Christians. Those are not available. Now, you can take PTO, but that's different than the respect that people say is important. Uh, the Jewish community, there's no chance to take, celebrate International Holocaust Remembrance Day. It comes before you get any of your time credited. Horem, Yashasha, Passover, Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, Hanukkah. Again, we don't leave enough flex, there's no flexibility. Um, they may be able to use a Veterans Day float for Hanukkah, but again, that's a question. We have a growing Muslim community in this town. I don't expect the library to learn the big reads of either the Hindu or the Muslim lunar calendars, uh, let alone the Chinese lunar solar one, but Ramadan, Ay, Ashura, Islamic New Year. Again, four holidays, uh, for Hindus. A good chunk of our community celebrates Safran, Dhanbongo. Again, that's a early January holiday. No employee would have accumulated a time allowed to allow them to do that. Now, we have so many sects in Hinduism, I've been easy on you, but I'll just relate it long, for six of 60 days that people celebrate, right? Mahashiva Ratri, Holi, Ram Nali, Tane Shradali, Navratri, which is actually nine days, uh, Vidya Dusmi and Diwali, some of the more famous ones. Even our pagan community, the summer festivals. A little known fact is the original community here is our Native Americans. We used to have a Jibwe and a Lee Potawatomi village. And oddly enough, if you look at the census data, the number of American Indians here still exceeds the number who lived in those villages back in the East Lakes. Now, the Eriquay Midwinter Ceremony, that would be a big one for others, so check out the tribes. The tribes also celebrate Native American Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day, odd days that are not Thanksgiving despite what the, uh, modern academia tries to repurpose. We also have a number of federal holidays, which were obviously put there out of respect or something, but people who respect them may find themselves without option. Martin Luther King Day, again, that comes before your credited without a flexible holiday. So for those who think that's important, and many of us do, uh, that's challenged. Lincoln's Birthday, Washington's Birthday, Casimir Pulaski Day, which the city of Chicago recognizes on par with that in locata, because the importance contribution to that town of both Polish community, but also is incredibly important role during the Revolutionary War. Peace Officers Memorial Day, when we celebrate those people who've given their lives, being our policemen, being the people who protect us. Columbus Day, and of course Veterans Day, which again, in the formula put forth by Trustee Michener, we disrespect by making it a floating holiday, but at least we have one that you can float. Among our growing Asian community, the non-Indian agents, we have the Chinese New Year, Korean New Year, which I'm not sure if they're the same day or not, but it's going to come close. The Tomb Sweeping Day, the Dragon Boat Festival, the Harvest Moon Festival, these are big deals. These are big deals. For those who've done business with China, you know, they literally send a billion people home. It's the biggest human migration every year, the Mid-Autumn Festival. And of course, even with our Hispanic community, we have not just the various Catholic holidays, but the quasi, we have those holidays that are culturally religious. My understanding, St. Patrick's Day is a religious holiday in Ireland. It's something different for Irish communities. St. Ode Mio has its own thing, Carnival, et cetera, et cetera. So as you can see, in the future, we will have an ever more diverse population with an ever more set, diverse set of desires to celebrate. Of course, our business goes on. We would never expect the library to close these 60, 70 days, although you'll see some of the classics, and libraries will, mentioned earlier, do close 60, 70 days a year. Um, so in light of that, what I would like to propose is, in addition to the motion put forth by Chairman Crawford, that the finance department's motion of converting a PTO day to a floating holiday and allowing both floating holidays, and I believe Julie has the language, uh, Julie, were you able to bring those sheets of paper? Um, so I'd like to propose that this change also be added on to your proposal. So now we will be, this, you can read the language of that original proposal as it gets passed out, but now, so sometime we'll be creating a 11th holiday, Juneteenth, and there will be a 12th holiday, which will be a floating holiday, along with, and like Veterans Day, which is already a floating holiday, both floating holidays will float all year long. So this will bring us closer to being in sync with the city's number of holidays. This will give flexibility to an increasingly diverse community and employee base, and it will allow, we've already verified with the finance department, this proposal is cost-free and is compatible with our systems that Julie and I met with, uh, with Finance Committee member, and the lady from the finance department, talking about the HR systems are difficult, difficult to be implemented. So it's easy to implement and it's cost-free.
Well, we have a motion on the floor.
Yes, and so I'm proposing amendment.
So, uh, I'd like to hear other discussion in relation to the amendment, I mean, in discussion relating to, uh, what's on the floor currently. Yes.
I just think, thank you so much. I wish we could work together better, and I don't know if Dr. Meadows is going to be able to make any differences, because I heard about five, four to five minutes before this meeting started, Trustee Chair Curry talked to, uh, Trustee Crawford about what he's talking about now. He talked about making an amendment and diverse populations, and that was before the board meeting even started. And I think trust is very important. I don't know if anybody can come in from the outside and make us better on the inside. I think having a proposal is awesome, but I think obviously that was underhanded. It was not put in the board packet. We didn't have time to study this. We weren't given any information. When I have brought up things in the past, um, for motions, I've been told, old Tara, with your surprise motions, and I think we have to be fair. Um, I will say I was misquoted. I never said Veterans Day isn't important. I have veterans in my family. I find that highly offensive. And also questionable, um, as is your way, obviously, with the comment that you made about black people being the lowest amount of people in, uh, in Novi, the, the lowest diverse population. Keep in mind that a lot of people that are asking for Juneteenth to be a holiday aren't just black people. That's the beauty of it. People recognize, and I'll give you some history, people recognize that African Americans, black people in America are Americans and they were enslaved. They worked for free. They were brutalized. They were raped. They were brought to this country, um, against their will, and they were, uh, they were forced to create America and make it great and make it awesome, right? Uh, unfortunately, when we were told as the people that, uh, you know, slavery's over, two years later, some people found out about that. So they were still working. That's the significance of the holiday. And Trustee Chair Curry, I, I have to trust that you have a good heart, you know, and I have to trust that there's still just some education for history. I'm not, I'm not denying anything else or anyone else. I, if you talk to, clearly you don't know me, but, um, I love, uh, all cultures. I'm the only one, the only one that has done research on this whole panel, the only one that has done research and made sure that we had APA LA, BCA LA, um, the JCLC, all these other organizations within the American Library Association approved as memberships, because we do need to go beyond ourselves. I don't want to just look in the mirror. I want to look in a window. And I think our library has an opportunity. It sounds like you've done a lot of good research. I'm interested in hearing more. I think the cool thing that I've noticed our library do, and that I'm proud of actually, is that we do language classes. I have some friends that love to come to the language, uh, groups, the conversation groups. Um, there's a lot of opportunities to learn about different cultures and, and it's done in different ways. This is a proposal I made. I, I think that, um, the comment about, I don't know what you said, virtue sanctum, I think we need to be careful, like, not insulting people if they have a difference of opinion. I think there's a way of bringing us all together and understanding people. I've got to tell you, I still have some education to take in. I'm interested in that, and I have some fantastic friends that helped me. Um, this year I was able to learn a lot more about Diwali. I'm sure I need to know more. But I was able to learn more, and I was really excited, because the festival of lights is something that brings light, is something that's to be celebrated, is something that's to be, bring us together. I want to know more. So I don't know if you think my motives are bad, or if I'm just being all about me. I'm not. Um, my equating it to Fourth of July is that if we're celebrating independence, don't forget the Americans, the Americans that still had to work for free, that were brutalized, raped, tortured, branded, and mistreated, separated from their families. We are Americans and we were here, and we were not recognized. So please understand, I'm coming from a place of knowledge and of history. Can we take more in? Yes. But also, I do want to make sure that you understand that our employees actually asked for this.
No, they didn't. They didn't read the survey.
I'm sorry, do you have the floor?
Oh, yes, I don't.
No, call to order here.
I will, uh, just raise my hand for a chance to comment when it's appropriate.
And I don't, I, this is, we've done this before, and it's been blamed on me that when you're disrespectful, that I can't get along with people. So I don't know how to do this, but, um, I do want to be respectful, and that's why I said I have to believe that you have a good heart. I just think that there's a way for us to come together, but I don't know if Dr. Meadows can change that, if we can't even have a conversation on this panel about history. You're the historical commission person, so I was excited when I saw that you did bring forth this very important piece of history, of American history. So, um, I do ask that we, um, keep the first motion. I think that's important. I do ask that we, uh, recognize what the community has been saying, what everybody's been saying, and that we do make Juneteenth a paid holiday, not just a closure. Thank you so much.
Is there a discussion from anyone else? Yes, Member Julie.
Um, so there's a couple of things. And Trustee Chair Curry, you might disagree. I feel that your interpretation of the survey is indeed your interpretation. Um, I would like to offer a different interpretation, because I am on the HR committee. When we put out the survey, uh, actually, when the director put out the survey, um, initially, there was some apprehension, because we weren't sure how to craft it. Um, this wasn't something that was taken lightly or flippantly, because you need to have data that kind of cuts the emotion out of everything, right? In other previous discussions on this dais, uh, it's been brought up by finance and in other situations that we have to remain net neutral. We didn't have that information to have good, critical discussion with what that meant. So in our committee, we finally were able to get that information with regards to the different tiers of staff, who it affects, how many people it affects, and what it truly does cost in terms of the overhead for the benefits package. That question is now answered, and the cost is a little over $2,000. I know that you think that that math is wrong, but that math has been calculated from staff, who manage that all the time. Second thing, interpretation of the survey. I know that you think there isn't what you're saying is an overwhelming majority, but when you look at the data, the staff is overwhelmingly in support of Juneteenth as the 11th paid holiday, because some of them were willing to sacrifice their PTO day in order to make that happen, which, for the record, is the recommendation that finance was trying to put forth. From somebody who has an abundant amount of experience when it comes to human relations, even though I'm not a certified human resources person, but it is my job to understand how people work as a communications professional, that was probably one of the worst morale- people work as a communications professional, that was probably one of the worst morale moves as far as managing employees that could have ever happened. And yet, when we put out the options of what people could get, including a huge benefits package of 13 paid holidays, yeah, some people chose it, but you would have thought the majority would have chosen. You get 13 days instead of one extra day, and then on top of that, you have people that are willing to sacrifice personal time off in order to honor this day as a paid holiday. That is what is interpreted from the survey. That is what we garnered from it as a committee. If you were there on the day that we had the DEI training with Dr. Marx, you would have seen the passion and profound commitment from the staff for this community when it comes to diversity and equity and inclusion. The issue that we're trying to convey here is that we have the money to pay for it. That's one thing, because that was called into question. I believe we solved that question. Second, how does the staffs feel with regards to possibly giving up a PTO day in order to make this holiday genuinely paid? Overwhelming support for the holiday, but also, some people were willing to give up their PTO for this holiday. And to me, interpretation-wise, that shows that overwhelming support. I understand you might disagree, but honestly, that's why we brought it back up again. This is for the staff who do represent our community, and they work for our community in a beautiful way. And you yourself said, even a couple meetings ago, "I brought that research forward, you guys," and you're repeating it tonight. Our library is open way more than other libraries in our class and population. I brought that forth, and you just repeated it. Seven days a week, over 340 days a year, one more holiday is warranted, and this one specifically is what's being asked for. Thank you.
Okay, let me, before I call in, anybody else have comments that hasn't already spoken? Yes, member Bartlet.
Just one more point of confusion, which seems to be with our library being open versus the minutes open, versus how you calculate numbers, all those sorts of things. You can't just go by straight cash flow. The reason being is we are not a commercial library. I don't have time to teach managerial accounting here, because what happens is, is you have a 40-hour work week, if you have a 40-hour work week, you have a 40-hour operation, you are a commercial environment. If you have a larger number of hours that we are open, like we are, and a lower number, you still have a 40-hour work week, that you have to balance all those employees to, you are in a traditional retail environment. It's an entirely different set of rules. So say I'm running a McDonald's, open 27 hours, you know, the worst case possible, work 24 by 7. I have to, if I have five employees there, I need 840 employee hours. I make them all salary, technically, I give them all a vacation day, and everything balances, and I should be happy, right? Well, not exactly, because when I'm done, I have to open that restaurant for six days. I am actually 48 hours short of the labor I need to run that place. That's the retail model. That's what we are dealing with, and that's how we have to balance things. And if we're facing, if we're facing inflation, we're facing the situation that they say we're facing, and we don't try to understand some of that, we're in big trouble. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, member you.
Thank you, Trustee Crawford. So, all right, there's a lot, there's a lot with that, okay? But we've heard several times from our residents, our staff, that this has been on the table several times, we've heard that tonight also, and we know how passionate our community is, our staff is on this matter, okay? So, just putting that out there. So I guess at this point, I don't know why we're still discussing this, because every time it's been brought up, and residents have brought this up before, every time it's brought up, we add something new that we're questioning. We've gotten our survey results, we've gotten the cost of the holidays, which are valid questions that I had as well. I still supported the motion at those moments, and now we're adding all this other, all these unknowns to it again. So I think at this point, we've gotten what we've asked for, okay? And I think we need to move on and listen to our residents. Again, we attended that trustee training over the summer, our, the trainer that was there said, "Our job as trustees are to listen to our residents and what they're looking for, and do everything in our power to address those concerns and to solve those issues." And I'm looking at the survey results from staff, and it seems like the highest option is option two, which is adding Juneteenth as a paid holiday, with the 13 of the survey results returned, which is the highest of our employees that do receive paid holidays responding, that they would choose that option. And even four of our staff, which is again the highest that responded, that do not receive benefits, holiday pay, also chose that option. And the biggest mind-blown, and I know this was brought up at Audience last week, or last month, that really was the eye-opener, was that we gave them option five, which is adapting what they offer here at the rest of the city with 13 paid holidays, but our staff opted to choose option two, where they would only get the 11 paid holidays, which was the addition of Juneteenth. So I think that speaks a lot at how passionate our staff is and how they want this as well. So I'm hoping that we finally kind of act on this tonight. Thank you.
Through the chair. Currently, Trustee Chair Currie has an amendment to the motion, but I don't think we have support for that yet. Are we calling for that?
I'm going to go at ease for a moment while I confer with legal attorney.
Surge of recess?
Yes.
Five minutes?
Five minutes. Five minutes. All right, member Chair Currie, would you like to make a formal amendment at this time?
Yes.
Okay, could you give us the formal amendment, the way you would like to have it?
Did everyone get the sheet of paper that Julie handed out?
I did not get the sheet.
I can't even read this, it's like in three-point font.
Can you pass it down, I'll read for you.
Sure.
There's copies for everyone.
Yeah, there's copies here.
So. I think I've got some extra, so Barbara, do you have one in case of simplification on different?
So.
So the amendment would read?
So the amendment would read, and this would be in addition to, not a replacement of what you're proposing. So I want to make clear that, and that's what I said, but perhaps the motion's got the better people's listening. So the number will just change slightly, but it's exactly the text here. So this was originally what we, the Finance Committee tried to refer previously, and at the time, Trustee Mitchner may not recall, but she amended this into a totally different thing out of referral, and did that on the spot, on the fly, even though it was in the board packet. But so, "An optional PTO day will be converted to a 12th paid holiday for all library employees, salaried and hourly personnel. Part-time employees will accrue holiday time per current employment policies as with other holidays. Two, included in this proposal, the Veterans Day holiday, which is currently designated November 11th, or a floating holiday in the month of November, will be modified. Veterans Day will become a floating holiday capable of being used anytime throughout the calendar year." Similarly, okay, so this third paragraph, we can skip, does not need to be there, because we're creating a new holiday from scratch. So when we originally submitted this language, so, I do apologize for structuring this on the fly, but again, so. So this proposal will not affect the library's observed closures for holidays. The library will remain closed, I mean, it's basically third and fourth become moot points, the third and fourth point here, right? So it's basically those two points.
Okay, that's your motion.
So let me, sorry, is that clear or not, Tom? Can I, have I confused you with my word salad?
It is not clear.
Okay, so.
Through the chair, can I just?
Yes, please.
Trustee Chair Currie, so, "In addition to the motion that's on the floor to create the Juneteenth paid holiday."
Right.
You're proposing, which you've passed out, items one and two only.
With a little bit of tweaks, right? So it should say, "A PTO day will be converted to the 12th."
12th holiday.
12th paid holiday.
Okay.
For all, dot, dot, dot. And the veteran, and what we're intending to say is, "The Veterans Day holiday will now float all year long." So if that language is...
So instead, so, instead of the month of November, that phrase would be all year long.
Right. So both holidays, both floating holidays will float all year long, is the intent. I apologize for the rough language, this was simply something the Finance Committee at the time was trying to refer to policy and HR at the time for further evaluation. Again, Trustee Mitchner's memory may fail, but she amended it out of all ability to refer, so. So it's those, the amendment is those two points.
Okay.
And I think that future proves, if I could just, so the closing, I think that future proves us, or rather, prepares us for the future needs of a diverse community that's going to have many, many more holiday requests and requirements, and I think it's sensitive to the needs that a holiday is not just a paid time off, it's something of community celebration.
Okay, so we have your motion.
Need a second?
And we need a second. Give us your second for the motion.
I'll second.
All right, discussion.
I have a question, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. Are you still taking current PTO time that is accrued for an employee, and you're taking one away?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we're converting one of the PTO days to a floating holiday. They do have a different accrual rate, right? One accrues instantly, the other accrues on a different calendar, but that's neither here nor there.
Just, I did second the clarification, what you're saying is, there is a Juneteenth holiday.
Yep.
And there is a PTO becoming the second floating holiday.
Correct.
So essentially, we're coming out of this for the staff with two holidays. A Juneteenth that is stationary, and another floater, and a PTO that becomes a floater that they can use and use as a celebration whenever they want.
And I would add, the November floater now becomes a year longer.
And the November floater becomes a year longer as we initially, okay. So yeah, I do second that motion.
The Juneteenth is stationary, PTO...
Think of this as, if I could clarify, chair?
Just a minute.
I just want to make sure I understand, for going back to my staff, yeah.
All right, do you have a question then for...
So, the Juneteenth is a stationary holiday, the Veterans Holiday now is a floater for the year that can be used at any time, not just November, and then you're taking away, we currently have, as an example, we currently have, for full-time staff, six PTO days that a staff person gets for a full-time. You're now saying they will now get five, but they're getting an additional PTO floater.
An additional floater, not a PTO floater, a floating holiday.
Floating holiday.
And I guess for clarity, the amendment shouldn't refer to Juneteenth, since the main motion is creating the Juneteenth holiday. So to, for brevity, this amendment converts one PTO day to a floating holiday that can be floated throughout the year, and it changes the current floating holiday that is in November to one that floats all year long.
Through the chair.
Okay, yes.
A point of clarification for Tom, our city attorney, if he's amending the motion, he does have to include the original motion verbiage, correct? No?
Through the chair.
Yes.
The original motion is on the table.
Okay.
This is proposed language to add.
In addition to.
It's an addition, not a replacement.
There's a second on the board, so when the conversation is done, you'll vote on just the language that Trustee Chair Currie put in.
Correct. Okay. Second point of clarification. So, Trustee Bartlet, you mentioned, and by the way, my mother was market manager for Taco Bell, so I do understand how fast food and retail works. So thank you for, you know, bringing that up for the record, but if we're adding an additional 12th holiday, according to what you were saying for prepping for inflation, isn't that counterintuitive with what you just stated?
The 12th holiday, because it is basically replacing a PTO, actually, you know, PTOs are, you know, it basically becomes a holiday as Mr. Chair, as Trustee Chair Currie would like it for the other employees to recognize their holidays. But yeah, it's, because it's a PTO, from a dollar standpoint, it's a wash. So yeah, the Juneteenth actually adds, adds a bit of a liability, but this portion of it does not.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, additional questions and comments, discussion? Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mitchner. You're okay, you're okay. In this document, and again, it's super small font, but it says similarly, "The Juneteenth holiday can be moved at an employee's request as a floating holiday anytime in the calendar year as well." I, you know, the fine, the fine print is always important to read, right? And it is definitely all fine print, but without an employee request, the Juneteenth holiday and Veterans Holiday will remain as June 19th and November 11th respectfully. So it also says, "The proposal will not affect the library's observed closures for holidays. The library will remain closed in observance of Juneteenth and the 19th of June, and open on November 11. Personnel is empowered to act with their discretion to be sure of base level of services."
Number Mitchner, just to tell you, this, his motion is really the first two, number one and number two.
Oh, so why are these here?
So.
This is for historical reference, this was originally brought to you guys, brought to us, trustees.
In August, this was from August.
This is a...
So your motion, and...
So this is part of the Finance Committee recommendation, is what it is. So it's numbers one and two, with just a correction, adding in a 12th paid.
Sure. No, it's great, I just want to make sure, when someone gives me a document that says this is what I'm proposing, Julie, please hand these out, I'm thinking that, you know, I wanted to make sure I know what I'm actually looking at. And I also want to ask for clarification, because I want to make sure that before I say yes or no to anything, I have understanding. So one and two is what is, "An optional PTO day will be converted to an 11th paid holiday." So one and two is what is, "An optional PTO day will be converted to an 11th paid holiday."
And the word optional shouldn't be there, it should, a PTO.
So we'll cross that out. And I'm only reading what your document is, so please understand, I'm reading what I was given. Okay, so a PTO day will be converted to an 11th paid...
No, to a 12th.
And it does say 11th here, just for the record?
Agreed, yeah, yeah, no.
Okay, and I'm just reading off what I see, so my brain can take it in, I like to read. Okay, libraries and all, "And a PTO day will be converted to a 12th paid library holiday for all library employees, salaried and hourly personnel. Part-time employees will accrue holiday time per current employee policies as with other holidays." So that's part of it, correct? And then number two, you have included in this proposal, "The Veterans' Day holiday, which is currently designated as November 11th or a floating holiday in the month of November, will be modified. Veterans' Day will become a floating holiday capable of being used anytime throughout the calendar year." So if I understand correctly, and I'm going to layman's term this, and you can tell me if I got it right, okay? I didn't have coffee today, believe it or not, for those of you who know me, that's a big deal. Okay, listen, so what you're basically saying is that you are okay, if I'm understanding correctly, and there was a lot of, a lot of words around your thoughts about Juneteenth, so please understand why I want to get understanding. You are saying that yes, you agree with the first motion made by President Crawford and, the HR recommendation, President Crawford and Trustee, excuse me, Vice President Dooley. You are agreeing that Juneteenth should be a paid holiday and closure, nothing changes there. That, I just want to make sure I get that part right first.
About the amendment you're asking, right?
Yes.
Yes, this amendment is an add-on to what Chairman Crawford has proposed.
If you don't mind, I just want to chalk it and make sure I take it step by step so I understand. That's so important.
No, 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 and then I'm, I'm just trying to answer you precisely.
If you don't notice all the paperwork, I want to make sure I get it, I'm a little nerdy. Okay, so, understanding what you're saying is you are not proposing that we take away the opportunity for the recommendation for Juneteenth to be a paid holiday and closure.
Correct.
You are saying you're okay with that, yes?
In this amendment, I am adding this to the prior amendment.
I haven't gotten to that yet, I'm going to get to that in a minute, I need to take this step by...
Yes, okay.
To be clear, the motion is on the table, the original motion that you made is on the table. This is really just about the language of the amendment.
I was getting to it, if you don't mind me finishing as trustee. I just want to make sure I understand if that's okay with you.
Back and forth between two trustees is a little different, but in addition...
You know what, Tom, I'm doing my best to understand, and as a trustee, I think I can ask as many questions as I possibly want to if I'm not, if I understand correctly what my role is.
Through the chair, I understand that there needs to be discussion, but I'm just trying to indicate that the discussion needs to be about the amendment to the motion that Tom, that Tom...
I want to be clear, as a trustee, I have been appointed by the mayor and council, and I feel a very strong responsibility to understand what I say yes or no to. I am shocked and appalled that you asked to go through the chair to actually interrupt me at this point, I'm shocked. I just want to make sure I understand, and if it's not okay that I ask for clarification when so many people do, that is shocking and telling. So I'd like to continue because we would have been done by now, if that's okay with you. Thank you. What I want to understand is to make, what I am trying to make sure I understand, and many of you understand, that if you look at the history of our board, if I don't understand things, they get taken away the next month. That has happened several times. Juneteenth was told, I'm going to go historical since you wanted to understand more of where I'm coming from. Historically, Juneteenth was told to me by our executive director that it would be a paid holiday and a closure. Our counsel at the time, who was serving on this panel, from Foster Swift, agreed that there was no need to do certain things, I agreed in trust, and that next month it was brought back and taken away. So anybody who doesn't understand why I need clarification should review the tapes, and Tom, I know you weren't here, but I encourage you to review the tapes, there's a reason why I'm making sure that I understand. It's important to me, it's my role. So I just want to make sure I understand, and I want us to be respectful and not cut people off. I want to make sure I understand what we're doing here. I want to make sure I understand that Juneteenth is being proposed as a motion for a paid holiday and a closure, and that is not being taken off the table. What I'm also hearing in the, yes?
I mean, I'm going to ask the motion, the person that's presenting the motions. It is correct, what she's, what she's saying then is that Juneteenth will be a paid holiday in your motion.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not changing any language in the main motion, so...
So this is, this is what I, this is what I...
All right, I have, I'm going to just defer to Mr. Schultz.
And I was just going to then ask, sorry, if I can just finish because I haven't been able to, I was then going to ask a little bit more about his motion that he's tacking on. This would have been done, I promise, but I keep getting interrupted for whatever reason, I don't know why. So again, so I just want to make sure that motion is clear, and then tacking on, you're asking for Veterans' Day to be able to be movable, if I'm understanding. So it's not just going to be a day that's respectfully given in November, but if employees ask, they're able to move that around, if I understand correctly, is that what you're saying?
Correct, so when we met with the folks at the, I think it was our HR, or it was our, when we met with the lady from Finance who advised us how the holidays accrue versus PTO. So yes, so right now, and we approach it from a feasibility standpoint. So right now, and perhaps the director can correct me if I say anything wrong, as an employee, you can float that holiday sometime within November.
Correct.
So this will allow you to float that holiday throughout the year.
I appreciate it, you know, it's, I think it's fair. I don't know why, I wouldn't be able to ask questions, I'm so shocked about that, but I need to understand what we're doing and what I'm saying yes or no to, thank you. So you're not changing anything with the original motion, you're just tacking on an additional opportunity for flexibility with Veterans' Day to be moved outside of November if needed?
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
That's all my thing, point of information, is the language of your original, maybe I didn't see, I just want to make sure so I didn't misrepresent anything for Trustee Michener. The original motion language, is that on one of these pages, or?
The original motion is in Matters for Board Action.
The original motion was to include Juneteenth as a paid holiday along with the closure of the November 11th.
No, I understood that, the full language of what the motion is that?
Yeah.
That's, let me, let me just pull that up, I'll just, just beg you for one moment.
Sure, page three, Trustee Chair Currie.
Page what?
Page three, under Matters for Board Action, item one.
Right, so...
Oh, you were asking for policy, my apologies.
The full language of the motion, that's what I, yeah, so, right, because I see Matters for Board...
So, we have a motion on the floor. We currently have a motion on the floor, and it was seconded, to, and just to make sure, even though, I mean, we're really not going to use this paper, this actually was what the Finance Committee originally proposed as their recommendation to the board, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the motion on the floor now is that we utilize number one and two of this, of this document, except the only change would be the 12th paid holiday.
And the word optional would be stricken.
And the word optional would be stricken, okay. So what we are voting on then is, is right before you, except you're going to take out optional, and it's going to be a 12th holiday. So what we would be doing would be going to 12 holidays versus the 10 that we currently have, correct?
Correct.
Any questions or concerns about that? Director Farkas, you understand what we're trying to do here in this motion? Okay, member Dooley?
I just want to go on record that I appreciate your amendment. My only concern is that we are taking away a PTO holiday from our staff without really engaging them in that, like the HR committee did when we came up with the matter for board action in item one. So I am not going to be in favor of your amendment.
Okay, any other discussion about the motion that's on the floor?
I appreciate that point of clarification, I think that's what I was trying to get to, but I was interrupted several times. I was going to ask about that PTO conversion piece. Trustee Dooley, thank you for doing that, I would have missed it because I was interrupted several times, thank you.
Okay, okay, so a motion on the floor and it's been seconded, I'll ask Mr. Secretary to call the roll.
Trustee Michener?
No.
Trustee Wood is absent, trustee you?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes, trustee Chair Currie?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
No.
Trustee Dooley?
No.
Motion fails, please.
Okay, yes. Now we go to the original motion, and the original motion is to include Juneteenth as a paid holiday along with closure for the Novi Library, of the Novi Library. And there is a second, member Dooley, seconded the motion, member Bartlett, please call the roll.
Trustee you?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes, trustee Chair Currie?
No.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Michener?
Yes.
Motion passes, five.
Please, audience, appreciate your decorum. Moving along, I do want to tell you though, members of the Finance Committee, I really appreciate your diligence in helping us to make this decision. I know it wasn't easy, all that you did, and I and our committee too, and HR, we really did struggle with a lot of the, you know, the data, and trying to find out what would be the best options for us. So I appreciate your diligence, and I appreciate everything that you did to bring the information forward. And so, anyway, the motion passed, the original motion. So now we move out to the second matter for board, for the board today, and as for charges for damaged, destroyed, or lost materials on page 73 to 74, members, you will note that the Policy Committee has discussed and made changes to the policy concerning charges for damaged, destroyed, or lost materials. And Director Farkas, if you would be able to clarify what the board needs to know
Sure.
regarding the policy meaning changes.
Sure, so if we can start on page 72, this is the current policy that's in place until December 31st. If, if nothing is done, based on the policy that you have in front of you on page 72, we would go back to charging fines, as it's noted above. The Library Board approved the continuation of fine-free status on overdue Novi materials due to COVID-19 until November 31st, 2021. So at this point, because we're getting towards the end of the year, we're looking at what direction the board would like to take. That's your current policy, what I've given you is two policies, depending on what moves forward with you as a board. I've given you a policy where it was, it was originally charges for damaged, but we've changed it to fees, so it's understood better. The only word that's changed on page 73 is the word fees. And then the red is stricken out about the timeframe. If, if you are, which would be for no fines. If you are continuing with fines and fees, page 74 is the policy you would approve so that it includes fines for overdue materials, which we would bring back and start as of January 1st, which actually will be the 2nd because we're closed on the 1st. And then it's fees for damaged, destroyed, and lost materials.
Okay, you know, I'll start the discussion, you know, before I would feel comfortable voting for or against fine-free, I would like to know what we have learned during this trial period that we've had. We've had a trial period, and generally, trial periods are utilized in order to evaluate or examine a program. So the trial and evaluation data should answer questions that I feel we need to know. For example, I'd like to know how this six months compares to the previous six months as far as materials being taken out would go. I would like to know if there has been an increase in number of materials returned over the previous six-month period, and I am quite sure that COVID has, will have affected some of these, some of this data. And I'd like to know if there's been an increase in damaged materials returning late during this trial period. And I would also like to know if there's a particular Novi zip code that has more late fees and blocked cards. And I'd also like to know what is the percentage of late fees coming from non-residents? And if, if we block access, and this is something that I, I don't really know, and I guess I'll have to ask now, is if we block someone's access to materials, can they still have access at another library? And maybe, Director Farkas, do you know that off the top of your head?
I, I would have to check in terms of different policies per library.
Okay, and another question is, what is the percentage of our operating budget that comes from fines separated from damaged or lost materials? I'd like to know how many of our patrons have had their cards blocked. I'd like to know how the money that we've taken in from fines decreased over the last five years. And I would like to know if there's been any gathering of stories from our patrons and non-patrons regarding how fines affect them. So those are the kind of questions that I have. Before, I would feel comfortable with voting one way or the other. So I guess I'll open the floor for discussion from other people and what their feelings are. Yes, member Dooley?
Thank you, Trustee Crawford. Through the chair, Julie, I also have some questions that I think we need in terms of more for clarification so that we can talk about this thoughtfully with fines and fees. In the policy, it says that the library director has the authority to change the borrowing periods and fees information. So to clarify, does that mean that you determine the set fees, or is there an actual like guideline of how fees are charged, like the amount?
We have, we have an actual borrowing periods and fees information sheet where there are fines, or there are fees that are assessed.
Okay, great, I wanted to clarify that.
And we change it, we look at it, we change it, it's not been changed, it's usually typically based on costs and things that we know of. We have not made changes in a long time.
Is that kind of document what other libraries follow too?
Some, it's, you know, what you're charging per day, things like that, yes.
Thank you, I wanted that for the record, for clarification.
Absolutely.
So I'm kind of wondering, as well as Trustee Crawford, what is the percentage of our residents that are currently blocked from being able to access our library due to late fees? Also, what is the resource and opportunity cost that our staff has to take with regards to time to process the fines and fees? Also, what is the actual process when it comes to going fine-free? For example, logistically, like, let's say that we're fine-free, is there an auto-renewal process? How many times does that happen? And then what happens after that? Will they get their warning that they have to return things? Like, logistically, how would we execute the fine-free? There's got to be models that the other libraries operate with. Also, how does fine-free impact libraries in our class and population size? I think that was actually brought up in public comment, so, but that's...
Could you repeat that one again, Trustee Dooley?
Sure, it's, how does fine-free impact libraries in our class and our population size? That's just something that I'm wondering about, if, if there's data on the table with other libraries that have gone fine-free, then how do they make up that revenue because they decided to do that? What's the impact on them? It looks like there's some historical data, it sounds like there's lots of libraries more than I realized in the state of Michigan. But I know that it's important when we do the comparisons that we have to compare our sister libraries with the same population of us. And then also, I would like the Board of Trustees to consider, you know, when we're in this discussion, fine-free is something that some of us have, have discussed, and, and I know Trustee Michener has championed this particular issue for a long time. And I know our director has also brought this forth as well for discussion and consideration. So what is the end goal here? Because this is a revenue stream that is antiquated. And I did bring up before that I think it's our job to think about additional forms of revenue that is outside of penalizing our public. I'm not going to get into penal fines because that's beyond my pay grade. But really, like, the, the actual fines and fees, that's something that is being, you know, worked on by libraries across the country, and obviously our state. So if we have an end goal, for example, if the trustees, if there's trustees that can't support it currently, would they be in support of it eventually? in support of it eventually? And in which case, how do we get there? That's something that I'm wondering as well. So, that's not for you, Julie. That's for the trustees, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
But that's, that's something I want you to think about when we talk about it. It's like, how do we get there? If we want to increase access, if we want to break down barriers, how do we get there? And that's just all I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
Number Bartlett?
I would have just one note with the libraries, because I did do a comparison based on the number of the libraries that have been reported on various social media, you know, comparing them with us. Essentially, I have yet to find a library that is open as many hours as we are. I have yet to find a library that is open seven days a week with the extended hours. And it's, for some, you know, because one of the things that everybody keeps bringing up is accessibility. For some reason, we have defined accessibility not as fine-free. We've defined accessibility as the number of hours we're open. And I even, libraries I found that were open seven days, when you add up their hours versus ours, we find, I find that they're still open eight hours less than we are. So, in fact, one of the best examples, they brought it up today, is the city of Detroit. The majority of their branches close on Friday and Saturday. They advertise on their webpage, "We have late hours." They close a full hour before we do and don't open any earlier. And all that takes, I mean, whether, is it right to use punitive fines for funding? No, we have. And it is in the budget now. And, you know, we're called upon, how do we replace that? And I don't have, you know, nobody here has taxing authority. Nobody here has ability to increase that number. And the facts are, on our annual report, for every three dollars we take in, two dollars goes to employees and benefits. And in this, in a time of increased inflation, all the things that I'm sure that everybody on this Board is feeling in their weekly budgets, I don't think it's fair to hit the current employees now. You know, again, it's, that's, that's my feeling.
Okay. And then we go to this side of the panel. Trustee Michener?
Thank you so much. And thank you for the healthy discussion on this. It's a hard one, for sure. Like, we obviously need money to run. And it's one of the reasons why I asked the questions I did earlier in the Treasures Report, which I believe Julie's going to get back to us on some of these, some of these notes that we don't know yet. Something was brought up, was like, the money. It's not very clear if these are funds that are collected under fines or if they're fees. The breakout wasn't there. I did mention that earlier, because I was confused about that as well, and I wanted to understand. I know in prior conversations, we were talking more about fees, and sometimes people conflate the two. But fines is obviously the accruals. I actually brought the sheet, whoopsie, sorry. I brought the sheet from our own, our own information here, on borrowing periods and fees. And it actually has, like, the renewal limits, the overdue fines and days, what's renewable, what's not renewable, consumable supplies, items, and things of that nature. I should have brought one for everybody, but I didn't. So, sorry. But what I will say is that this gives insight to the, to the actual part that deals with the accruals. The accruals is what I am against. I am not proposing that we are a free burns and noble. That is not what I'm doing. I think that if I take a book, and I have, and I haven't returned it in time, and I get that little email that says, hey, you know, this is going to be yours. I gotta, I gotta eat that, right? That's, that, I shouldn't get an exception to the rule, right? So, I get that. I get that if the book is lost, or if it takes too long, just so you're aware, if you're not aware, then you do end up owning that book and you need to pay. I think that's fine. What I'm nervous about and concerned about is more so the accrual situation. This is, from the research that I've seen, this is what really gets people with the accruals going up and up and up. That's where the situation happens, where people actually, all of a sudden, are paying so much more money for, like, a fifteen-dollar book, right? I love Cicely Tyson's book, and I kept it too long, and now it's mine. Whoops, I'm sorry, Julie. But, but it's mine now, you know, I had to pay that. But let's say that fines were in play and accruals happened, I would have to pay way more than what that book actually costed. So, that's really important to understand. I know that Julie's going to give us some data. I think it's important to get the data, both from Brian and, and Trustee, I'm sorry, Trustee Bartlett, and Trustee Dooley, that was mentioned. You know, Trustee Bartlett made some comments about the different libraries. Obviously, we are, you know, every library does have their own culture and energy, right? So, I did bring a list, libraries that have gone fine-free in Michigan, because I wanted to understand it, but I'll share it. So, Monroe County Library, Southgate Library, Brandon Township Library, Taylor Community Library, Garden City Public Library, Detroit Public Library, as has been mentioned, Redford Township Library, Waterford Township, which I think are good, from Council member mention, Dibron Heights, Franklin Public Library, Mount Clemens Library, Lion Township Library, Milford Public Library, Crowe Main Library, and Heartland, Michigan, Romeo District Library, Memphis Public Library, LaPierre District Library, Carroll Area Library, Stair Public Library, Branch District Library, and Coldwater, Eden Rapids Library, DeWitt District Library, Grace A. Dow Memorial in Midland, Saginaw-Chippewa Tribal Library, and Mount Pleasant, Alcona County Library, Fresk Isle District, Sheboygan Library, Northfield Township Library, Mackinac Area Library, Harbor Springs Library, Potaski Library, Charlevois Library, Boyne District Library, Leland Township Library, Manistee County Library, Luteet District, and Grand Haven, Kent District Library, Henneka District Library, Elagon District Library, J.C. Willard Library, and St. Martin, Comstock Township Library, Kalamazoo Public Library, Pawpaw District Library, Cass District Library, Buchanan District Library, St. Ignace Library, Community District Library in Corona, Michigan, Capital Area District Library, Waterville Library, Grand Rapids Public Library, Mason County Library, Traverse Area District Library, Bridgeport Library, Offerman Memorial Library in Kingston, Michigan, Farmington Community Library, Baldwin Tree Library in Birmingham, that's where our director came from, Flatrock Library, Superior District Library, Bath Township Library. And also, like many other libraries are in the process of going fine-free and are partially fine-free, including Hackley Public Library in Muskegon, Muskegon Area District Library, Howland-Millan Library in Zeeland, which has eliminated fines for children and teens, Herick District Library in Holland, Sagatuck Douglas Library, Finnville District, Willard Library in Battle Creek, Hamburg Township Library, Dorothy Hall Library in Diamond, Diamonddale, T.A. Cutler Library, St. Louis, Michigan, Central Michigan University Library, Richfield Township Library, Spring Lake District Library, Tammerack Public Library in Lakeview, Ruth Hughes in M.L.A. City, which just voted to go fine-free, actually, for two thousand twenty-two. So, Grand Rapids Public Library, it limited, eliminated fines for everyone. And they gave a big description of their reasons for doing that as well. So, there's a lot of good information that's out there online, also with our amazing library in Michigan, M.L.A., A.L.A. But just looking at Michigan in general, because we could go all over the place, right? But if we're looking at Michigan, it is a trend that's happening. There are some things we have to consider. But again, we might be banking ourselves on, oh, this money's going away, but we might not even be collecting that money. I just want to be clear on that. So, we're waiting for that information, which I think will be really interesting and important to understand, because we don't want to say that we're banking on something that we're not getting anyway, because we don't do a collection agency either. So, keep that in mind. Thank you.
Yeah. So, library access is something I'm very passionate about. And I want to start by seconding what Trustee Bartlett said. The two classics libraries that are most comparable to us in Oakland County are probably Royal Oak and Waterford. Waterford is closed seventy-one days a year. Royal Oak has closed a very similar amount, I believe, seventy-four days a year. So, what is the benefit of them being closed? Obviously, any loss of revenue here, it only goes three places: the building, the people, the collections. So, if we, when you take away a source of money, it has to come from somewhere. We have asked the director to propose where those things are in a non-tax increasing thing. As far, we have not seen that, but I think it's an important thing to understand. This is a not insignificant amount of money. The second thing I would say is, and it's, it's a tough challenge we've given to Julie, I think it's Bart who's helping you on the data side, right? The other, no, sorry.
From, from Support Services?
Yeah.
Marion Zermatt?
Marion, Marion, sorry.
Yep.
So, for example, one thing when you do something like this is, well-meaning this, how many people are you benefiting? So, our average fine per person is quite low. And one thing we're not able to see is, and so I've asked her to do this, is when you take a snapshot in time of how many cards are suspended, that doesn't really tell you how many people have lost access, because you enter a suspended status until you come and pay. The vast majority of the, of those we know are self-curing. Either next time I check out a book, oh, you're currently suspended, okay, here's my couple bucks, get me back going. So, we are trying to do a time series to see how many by card number are staying suspended over a period of time. And that's something she's chasing down. It's not easy. It's real data, but information matters. The second thing is to understand is, we already do is, or sorry, the other thing is, make sure we're not arguing against a straw man that's not real. So, we are not some big giant impersonal machine that slams the door on people. So, when children make a mistake, the parents' cards are never shut down because of a kid's card. We use that as an instructional thing for the kid. If a kid keeps a book too long or whatever, they still have access to their parents' cards. So, we've definitely taken that. Second, any adult, and kid as well, all these things are flushed on an every-two-year basis. We don't carry over ad infinitum. Three, in special cases, the director and her team are empowered to make adjustments. So, we're, it's not that we're not making any, it's not that we're, our goal is not to keep people isolated. So, what is this? There was a comment made from one of our staff at Public, that this is punitive. No, if you think about what a library does, we take a physical capital asset, and then we share it across the population. But the amount of time we share it is limited, limits how, the utility of that. So, you may say, Julie, why are there twenty copies of Harry Potter? Well, it's because there's a lot of demand for it. So, when I keep a book long, that stops CAP from taking the same book. If that happens, and we would, and our fines are not punitive, it's a few cents a day, and the vast majority of people, it's a reminder, it has a beneficiary of it. So, that's one thing to look at. And finally, there's the issue of morality that was brought up, and I want to refer all the trustees, I believe it's to page twenty-five. So, right now, the Michigan Library Association is mailing all of us to make sure that we call our Congress, our state representative and all to oppose, because there's a couple of people in, I believe it's the Traverse City area, who want to divert penal fines towards, I think it's snowmobile trails or something, which is important for their local economy. And they're saying, do not let this camel's nose under the tent. This is of core foundational funding for all of us. So, if we look at fines and forfeitures, page twenty-five in the current packet, okay, you see library but fines, this is state penal fines. So, I don't want to act like we're doing something of great virtue and then continue to use those funds. So, I think that's something we have to address here. Now, this is a foundational thing in Michigan, I believe, going back to the start of the state, or maybe it's the nineteen-oh, in our first constitution, our second constitution, we allocated these funds for the betterment of the community through these things. And so, that history is important. We have great libraries here for a reason. So, I, research continues, but I will say this, I, it's very easy to give things away. But the proportion of good we're doing from this is, is not been proven to be significant. This fine is really a minor inconvenience for the vast majority of people, for the few badly impacted. We have other methods to help them out. And so, I have yet to see a good sense of how many people have lost access to the library. And I think that's an important thing to know when you pass a policy like this. And so, in general, I would not be supporting fine-free from a moral standpoint unless we're also doing something to take the penal fines out of our operating budget as well, because those are people in a much worse situation than somebody simply has been denied a couple days access to a library.
Okay. Number Julie?
Yeah, to your point, Trustee Chair Curry, so, it sounds like we need to take more time. And right now, what's on the table, you guys, is that we're losing fine-free if we don't figure out a moratorium to get all that research in. So, we kind of have to think about that and possibly propose a motion to extend fine-free to buy that time to be able to get all this research, because it's going to take a while. It's going to take several months. So, that's something I wanted to point out. But really quick, through the chair, for Director Farkas, this is before my time, and I don't know if, this might have been before your time as our director. But when the millage was initially passed for the library, do you have any details on, you know, was it for this current building that we're in? Was it for the prior building? Like, what were the operating costs at that time, however many years ago that it was passed, versus where we're operating now? And to Trustee Bartlett's point, possibly deal with inflation in the future, maybe we're not operating at the full budget that we're supposed to right now, which could also impact this discussion as well?
So, I can offer you a little bit of information. Prior to me coming, you had a bond for your building, for the new building, which passed, which was wonderful. But that's what you, that's what you went out for, is for the bond for the building. The, the library currently runs on an operational millage that was not increased in order for it to run for the current sixty, almost sixty thousand square-foot building. It currently runs based on the twenty-four thousand square-foot building that you had prior to building. There was no additional operational millage that went out along with the new building. We continue to operate on the one that was set, which was a one-point-zero millage, which is currently down to about point seven-two, if I'm not mistaken. It goes, it sometimes goes seven-five. I believe it's at seven-two right now. It's never been, which is headly, and it's never been rolled back in order for you to get additional monies. That would be something you'd, you'd have to go out for in order to bring that back to one-point-oh. So, it's based on the twenty-four thousand square-foot operations of the old building you had prior to the new building.
Oh, wow. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay. Let's see, would else have something else to say, or the member Chair Kurden?
Yeah. Just to clarify the revenues thing, although the millage rate is the same as it was when we were twenty-four thousand square feet, the population of the tax base has grown significantly.
You are correct.
So, the revenue coming in is significantly larger.
Yes. You are correct.
So, we shouldn't make a stupid, steady statement there.
Appreciate that. But just based on operational, yes.
And the second thing is, the Finance Committee has done a fair amount of research into this thing. And I guess what I'd summarize, it's not a slam dunk that there's a large impacted population that would benefit from fine-free. So, I think there's no harm in letting it end. This was an emergency measure passed for COVID. Even the governor of Colorado said COVID emergency's over. It's, we are returning back to normal. I think that's okay. I encourage us to continue to research this thing, because although I am probably pretty clear to all of you against fine-free as a blanket approach, I'm a hundred percent in favor of measures that target the people who are affected by it negatively. And I think we have a lot of those. And once we can identify who we're missing, you know, again, if, if the data came back and said it was a massive population, let's reopen it. But I think the time is now to let the emergency end and proceed with normal business, and then come back to it in a more, as the data becomes clear to us.
Okay. Let me, let me ask number you. He hasn't spoken yet, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. So, I think obviously, it's, there's a lot more that we need to figure out before we officially commit to fine-free or bringing it back. So, I think it would be beneficial to extend the period that we have now. And especially because if we ultimately decide to go fine-free, it's going to take a month or a long process, as we've mentioned in the, in previous meetings, if we were to roll this out to educate our community again. So, that back and forth, I think, one, is a lot of work on our staff, but also confusing to our residents as well. So, that's my comment on that part. But as we continue forward and hopefully, as we get more information on this, I am curious to see, as a previous trustee has mentioned, how, how we did during our fine-free period in terms of the fees collected, the impact. Did, did we see a big service disruption about that? And in terms of the fine-free model in general, the big thing is, how accessible are we? Okay? And if we are ending or suspending privileges for our residents, then that's, we're, we're not accessible to them. So, and the fine-free move, movement is a increasing trend. I know this was brought up several years ago. And at that point, I know I wasn't for it initially either, but every time this gets brought back up, the list of how many libraries that are jumping fine-free is growing. It's in our backyard as well. Our neighbor, our neighboring libraries are doing the same thing. And I definitely am not for- Uh, and I definitely am not for supporting something just because someone else is doing it. I want to put that out there. But there's reasons that people are doing that. Nova is often known to be very wealthy affluent. But I know that there's also a, a pocket of the city, probably more than a pocket, um, that is not affluent. I work, I work in the Wald Lake Schools, serves northern's end of Nova, and one of our buildings is Title One. So there is a big population that, that, um, of Nova residents that are not affluent. And any of these barriers, um, would block their access from using the library, especially after we just did a major library campaign with Wald Lake Schools. My other building is close to Title One. So there is that need out there. And I'll say, if we do ultimately decide to keep fines, I will say one of the big things is because I have been a patron that has had my account suspended. And that is because I just, my busy life, I don't have time to make it from the north end down to the main library. I mean, that's just how my life works. So if we keep fines in the end, or even if we don't, we need to have some more, um, access points for residents to return their materials at other key locations. Natural in the library was always a great idea. I know when we brought that up maybe earlier this year, um, that wasn't feasible because we were trying, doing a tryout, but then also how do we kind of make sure that overlap times aren't there, or staff aren't visiting the kiosk and getting materials returned? We need to figure something out then if we decide to, uh, keep our fines. Just to be more accessible for, because that is, I think, a big reason. Not just for me, but for others that do have, um, that might have their accounts suspended because it could, might not be financially, it just could be time as well. So I think that's just something that we need to keep in mind as well. Thank you, trustee Crawford.
Okay, um, all right, member Mishner.
Thank you so much. I think this is a great discussion, everybody. Um, I just wanted to give some history, um, because it, it, it was a backwards, um, conversation that we had historically. Backwards meeting, it was brought up a long time ago, not backwards, like it's not important. So, um, Nova Public Library history with fine free, I kind of made a little note for myself, a little timeline. So January seventh, two thousand seventeen, there was a budget session. I asked Julie to look into money owed and what if it never gets paid? Very good questions, right? Uh, February fourth, two thousand seventeen, budget session, Julie provided a breakdown of outstanding fines and fees and broke it down to sixteen thousand, six hundred seventy-six dollars and ninety-three cents in outstanding fines and ten thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-nine cents in outstanding fees for a total of twenty-seven thousand, two hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. That was something to consider. Um, how do fines help our bottom line if they go uncollected? So again, I asked that question again today, but I also asked it, um, in the, in, in history, if you go back to the history, not back to the future. Okay, March twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, board meeting. Julie attended PLA conference in Philly and introduced the concept of fine free to the board. So she brought it back to us. March twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, board meeting program, um, was discussed and we came up with food for fines, which is introduced as like a baby step towards fine free. Um, and then, um, it's really important to understand too that Ja, um, January ninth, two thousand twenty, budget session, obviously, um, that was something that we discussed too. This was pre-COVID. So I want to make sure that we understand like, yes, uh, COVID is a factor now, but that's not where this discussion began on this board, right? Um, and then January twenty-first, two thousand twenty, board meeting, the follow-up from the January budget session, Julie shared that twenty-one percent at that time of active library cards had fines in them, which was five thousand, two hundred ninety-eight out of twenty-five thousand, two hundred forty-four. And at that point, Traverse City District Library just went fine free. So that was two thousand twenty in January. Um, again, pre-COVID. March seventeenth, two thousand twenty, was a special meeting and where we discussed emergency closure due to COVID. Um, and V.L. went fine free and obviously fee-free as well at that time. And then January seventh, uh, the budget session, topic of fine free came up again. And then June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one, the board meeting, um, where we voted seven to zero to officially go fine free for six months from July through December, and that's where we're at today. Um, I, I heard a lot of what you all said and I definitely think that you, um, there's some data that we still need to collect, but I would be in favor of extending it, um, and waiting on that data and, and working together to see what we can come up with. But I would be in favor of extending where we're at right now. I wouldn't just cut it off right now. I think we still have some due diligence and some, um, really good data to collect. And hopefully overall, it'll make us better no matter what. Um, I think the information, whatever we end up doing will be good for us as trustees, but also I'm thinking it'll be good for the staff too.
Okay, well, you all know we're up against the wire here with December thirty-first, so, member Julie.
Yes, um, really quick, um, I agree with trustee Mishner and the other trustees with regards to the information that we need to garner in order to make a thoughtful decision on this. Um, trustee Chair Currie, you mentioned that finance committee did research and I know you guys are awesome at collecting all of that. That stuff that I think is important to put in the packet in order for us to see and to have good thoughtful discussion on the work that you've done. So with that being the case, through the chair, um, I would like to, well, actually, before I offer the motion, I do need to clarify with Director Farkas through the chair, if that's okay. Director Farkas, with all the questions that we have, realistically, and please be conservative with your estimate because it's, could take longer with everything on your plate. How long do you need to answer all these questions? Because there's a lot of questions. And also finance committee has to, to come to the table too. I, I feel like it's gonna take the rest of this budget year, but I wanted you to talk about it.
I would appreciate that. It would give us a lot of time in order to do that, to be quite honest. Um, you know, I was thinking spring, but I, I, we do need some time. I mean, I've written down, I, I, the same questions, you know. I appreciate President Crawford sent me her questions, but just this afternoon, which I said, I cannot answer them before the meeting, you know. So she brought them to the meeting, which I appreciate the heads up. Um, we have, you've all asked questions. I, I have a lot of work, which I will have to work with some of my staff in order to get these answers. We will have to run reports, which at this time, and trustee Chair Currie and Bartlet know this, that we're in a new system of Carl. It's not as intuitive as the system we had before when it comes to data and getting information. It takes a little longer. That means us working with TLN, our consortium, to do some of those questions if I have to get it.
Okay.
So, um, your date, your deadline sounds feasible.
Okay. Through the chair, may I make a motion?
Sure.
I move to extend a fine free for the continuation of this current budget year, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two.
So the date would be June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one?
That's correct. Twenty-twenty-two, right?
I'm sorry, yes. Twenty-twenty-two, thank you.
Yeah.
If you look at page seventy-three, the only thing you'd be doing tonight then is if we could add the word fees instead of charges.
Sure.
Keep the red language, but it would say until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. That allows me to work with this policy currently and have it in place for, for the rest of the fiscal.
I'm amenable to that. I agree with that. Thank you.
Okay, so you're second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, two. All right. I remember you. You never get a chance. Uh, yes, okay, now a discussion.
Can, can I amend that motion only from the standpoint, seeing that, um, trustee Dooley and trustee Crawford had most of the questions that were pertinent, that you, you, the human resources committee at least meet and put together your lists. I understand you sent a list to Julie and get that comprehensive list to Julie.
I would appreciate it if you could do that for me. Thank you.
And also, um, understand, I mean, we, we talked about a lot of these data points and all this sort of, sort of information. We have been fined free for a year and eight months. So some of this data, we're, we're gonna have to get a real clear view of what part of this data we can get and what part we really can't get very well. Like, you know, some of the zip code data, because it's not like we're dealing with information that's even last year.
Sure. Doesn't that fall under finance? We need your help.
All right, we can do, we can do what we can, but we're, we're, you know, implementing a new system and we have to come up with a budget.
I know.
For, you know, for, for council and everything else by February.
That's why I think we need more time too.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
So do we need to amend?
So what is your exact verbiage of your amendment?
I just like, you know, that the, that the human resources committee or essentially trustee Dooley and Crawford get their list of questions together and submit them in writings for, for the, you know, and, and put it out, put it out essentially for the rest of the.
I don't know if that's an amendment as much as on the record.
A procedural item.
It's, it's on the record, yeah.
It's a procedural item.
Correct. Okay, so there's no amendment.
There's no amendment, as long as we agree with the procedural.
Agreed, I agree with that.
Additional discussion on the motion?
Yeah, um, just also procedural question and, um, and then just one thing. Finance, first thing rather, finances looked into a lot of this stuff. I want to advise you, one thing we're consistently told is for privacy reasons, we can't get granular data.
Right.
So it becomes very hard, especially we've transitioned systems in the middle of this. So it is very hard to get that precise data. So, but a lot of the questions you guys have asked have actually been previously asked and finances answered them to the best they can. So again, I go back to the prior statement. We cannot verify that there's a significant population or even quantify the population that is affected by this. Uh, procedurally, now, does this mean our budget will have to be created with zero fine revenue then? Based on this timing?
No, because you're starting in July, so if, I mean, I can put it in thinking you might, then you can have a discussion at budget session if you want that removed or not. I mean, that's, you know, that's all up to you when we get to, to budget discussions.
I mean, what is we, sorry, can I ask quickly?
It's for twenty-two.
Because what's the February thing? We have, we have a February deadline in the budget process, right?
We have, we have a budget process. So we're, we're going to have to have a budget that has amendments to it based on fine free and one that's based on the fines being in there. So in other words, other budgets.
I will show both.
Yeah, other budgets are going to have to be cut
Sure.
to, to handle the fine free portion.
To be able to talk about it.
So that's going to have to happen.
So, and I guess I would add, I would, as you present that, then I'd like that to be kind of a concrete example of what cuts are being proposed.
I will try to give you everything I can.
I mean, I, I get very nervous when we're rich, we can afford it, we're rich, we can afford it, and we keep doing things like that. Eventually, there has to be a quid pro quo in the budget.
Agreed.
Okay, trustee Mishner.
Thank you. I was just gonna say, just a reminder that, um, one of the questions on the table too that, that Director Farkas did write down was the, um, fees and the fines and kind of getting that information back. Just we don't have that data yet either. So just to assure you two that brought it up, I, I, I don't think it's gonna be a zero item when it comes to fees at least, right? Like there's still money that is being collected, so just throwing that out there as well. But I do agree that there's, there's just some information that we need as a board to be able to operate in the best way and we don't have it yet. So I'm, I'm in favor of the motion that trustee Dooley put forward of, um, gosh, I wrote it down.
Extending fine free to the end of our budget year.
June thirtieth, I'm gonna write it here, here, yes. June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, I'm in favor.
Okay, any other discussion relating to this? Okay, we have a motion on the floor and it's been seconded. Um, member Bartlet, will you please call the roll?